All right, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting in order. Would you like everyone to please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hillary, would you call the roll, please?
Jim Donbeck.
Here.
Steve Nelson.
Here.
James Shiloh.
Here.
Julian Davies.
Here.
Michael DeVito.
Here.
Eric Jones.
Present.
Kristen Renn.
Here.
And former student.
Thank you. As we begin the meeting tonight, we just want to call to mind the fact that there was a tragedy in Texas that happened at a school, elementary school, terrible shooting, another incident. And just wanted to say that I'm sure that I can speak for all of us here when I say that our hearts go out to those students who were injured, those who were killed, and their teacher was also killed. You know, we hope upon hope that this rash of shootings will come to an end. So just wanted to, didn't want to not acknowledge it at all, so we'll continue on.
Are there any changes to the agenda as proposed? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as proposed?
No.
Seconded.
We've been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Who didn't second it, even? Roll call.
Nelson?
Yes.
Renn?
Yes.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Davies?
DeVito?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Donbeck?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Audience to visitors, is there anyone in the audience this evening who would like to address the board on any particular issue or matter? No? Okay, we'll move on then to communications, correspondence, and informational items. Letters and newsletters. There are a few in there. Boyer requests. There weren't any since our last meeting. I love that. Community reports.
I just want to let people know that the Old North Grove School is having their summer open house. That will be June 24th, I believe it is. And they're having, the theme is "The Way Life Used to Be," and it's old-fashioned chores, kids' activities like maple hopscotch hoops, bake sale, raffle, craftsmen, headings, they're trying to do all kinds of things to get people to come. So, you know, just so you all know exactly when that is, I will send that information out to Communications, for example.
Yep. Me, too.
The Spartan Senate had its last meeting. I had an opportunity to sit in on that. There were T-shirts, there was jubilee, it was a really nice meeting, and the recap was just kind of what that Spartan Senate meeting encompassed over the past year. And there was apparently this thing called the DeKalb Exchange that's new to me, may not be new to everyone here, but Sycamore students go to DeKalb, DeKalb students come to Sycamore, and they compare their experiences. So they bring back ideas and insights about what they really liked and what they really thought could use improvement. And the resounding opinion of our students was that they were just so pleased with our facilities and how happy our staff was and their experience with teachers, and they were just really happy to have that opportunity to swap schools and appreciate everything that they have here in Sycamore. And I think DeKalb students also brought back a lot of value to DeKalb in that they saw we've got a little more close-knit community here. It's just such a big school, DeKalb, so I think you kind of get lost in the shuffle. Where in Sycamore, the size seemed to be a big difference. They talked about Teen Truth, that's been in the works, so again, just an effort to try and combat bullying, cyberbullying, and then also head-on social emotional well-being. And then, of course, there was discussion of the Student Council Room and maybe opening up more facilities to clubs and to formalize student councils, so.
Citizens Advisory Committee met a couple weeks ago, 12th or something like that. It was the last meeting of the year as well. Spent a lot of time in regards to just, you know, Steve just went over, goals again, kind of went through our process with the committee. And I felt like we were kind of getting into a flow now, where there was a lot of good discussion, good questions, just like questions about the AC in the high school because it had been down a couple days prior. It was that week where it was really hot, that's what I mean by that. The one week of summer we got. That was right in there when that meeting was. That's how it'll be defined, in my mind at least. So, yeah, see, it's had some discussion around that and in regards to like, you know, then talking about resources and how, you know, any dollar spent anywhere is resourcing somewhere else. So like, you know, me as a step back as a parent, even though my kid goes Southeast, what goes on to high school really does affect and how we allocate our resources to high school and other schools really affect Southeast. And just having a good conversation about that and just, and I think a lot of that then, I think gets filtered back into the, you know, into the community in some shape or form. So, yeah, we just spent a lot of time talking about goals. I think that, as Steve said, it's best to start the meeting like, you know, comes up the short agenda, we could have gone three hours. So it was an hour meeting. And I think as that, you know, we've been doing it now two years, two years?
Two years.
But I feel like there's more comments and questions coming from the people that are on there. So that, I think that's good.
More engagement.
More engagement, and I think you kind of figured it out a little bit along the way. I mean, so I think that's really good. So as, you know, as next year progresses, maybe there'll be more comments and questions and that will prompt further discussions. So it's one of the best things that's come out of the committee. If I've helped the discussion, maybe we'll agree as well, the discussion at this past meeting was our best one we've had.
Yeah, I agree with that.
James, is it the same group of people for the two years, or is there been some people that have left, new people have come, and what will happen next year?
Yeah, so there's an email that goes out that, we ask that they serve for two years, but obviously commitments can happen or whatever, so they're committed to it. So what, every year, some people will come off and some people will stay on, so you have some consistency and then some new people. So there'll be an email that goes out to the community, I'm sure you have a list a mile long, people are already wanting to be a part of it. And so that's kind of how that turnover happens. You still have some consistency, then you have new thoughts, new ideas, and it's a really good makeup of, you know, all schools represented, I mean, parents that have, you know, a child in elementary, middle, and high, some that have just, you know, a senior, some that have just elementary, so it's a really good mix of individuals in the room, so you're not just, it's not just all elementary school parents. So I think that also is very important for that mix in the room. So there's a bunch of different thoughts and ideas, and, you know, what one person's perspective is is completely different than somebody else's, it's almost kids in the district, right? It's all the same, but it's really not, so.
No planning and zoning for a while, no? We haven't had a meeting in a few months, actually. Not much to talk about, apparently. And SEUP May is our meeting that we're off, we don't do a regular meeting in May. We do have a virtual meeting coming up to review some changes in our bylaws, to address some confidentiality issues and a couple other things. We'll also be looking at new members, because there'll be some people rotating on and off through the summer. Our big ideas meeting will be in the middle of the summer. We're also in the midst of a search to replace Lauren, so as our executive director. And I think that's it for STF right now. I think there's, actually was one Strangler grant that we're going to take a look at also, to hopefully get that taken care of, so they don't have to wait until next fall. And then IASB, we will be hosting the Kishawaki Division Executive Board here, a week or two weeks, two weeks I think it is, at our admin building. That's our meeting we're going to meet to plan out the coming years, programs and such, so we're meeting at our old boardroom at the admin building, they're having some food catered in. And I think that's like the 10th or 12th, something like that, right? Yeah. So that'll be moving forward, IASB-wise. I was actually also on a Zoom call with all the resolution chairs last night and Tom Bertrand and the group, because there's going to be some rule changes that are going to be voted on by the IASB Board next month regarding resolutions. And some of that will be limiting the number of resolutions of district incoming forward, because last year we had one district that brought 11. Champagne unit four. And they have someone who's a resolutions chair for their division. That meeting went to one in the morning. We also put a time limit on the meeting per day of not more than five hours, so if we have to go into a second day, we'll do that. Fortunately, this year, the August resolutions meeting is in Naperville, not in Springfield. And we're going to do away with reaffirmations, so that we get a bunch of continued reaffirmations. And we're suggesting, we were looking at a sunset of certain belief statements or position statements. Instead of having an automatic sunset, it's just going to be on an annual basis, the staff will bring that to the overall resolutions committee, and they will make recommendations on, yeah, this is from 1974, but it still makes sense, or, you know, this is from 1974 and it should have been gotten off 20 years ago. So cleaning up some of that document in that sense, doesn't mean someone can't bring it back, but at least it'll clean up some of that, because some of it hasn't been looked at in many, many years. So that's kind of what we talked about, rule change-wise and making sure. And the other thing that we did add was, if you are a resolutions chair for your division and your district comes forth with a resolution, if you are the presenter, which has happened many times, or the author, you can't vote. So then you're basically taking your whole division's vote out of the mix, so the idea is get somebody else from your board to do their presentation and be the sponsor of it, that way you can still vote. Yeah, just cleaning a few things up, so that's all I have.
That's a lot.
I will say that when you talked about, Michael, joy and excitement, this past week was that way. We had honors night on Thursday night, and that was a wonderful evening. It flowed really nicely, I think it was set up very well, and students who emceed did a really, really good job. It seemed like, it seemed like it went faster than it normally does. So I think people were cognizant of, you know, not taking too much time, but yet I think everybody took enough time to get their message across. So do you remember, how much did the students receive in scholarships?
You know, I asked Steve Bolster that question, and he didn't have a number, and I haven't had a chance to follow up to get a number from the high school, but I was amazed, still kind of as a newcomer to that event, I was amazed. Every time a scholarship or grant was given, the amount, it just piled up, and it was, we had a very, very generous community. Yeah.
Yeah, and this was a wonderful way to celebrate it, and there were several scholarships were like, you know, $11,000, I think, a year, which isn't too bad, that's not so bad. Some of them were renewable, so it was...
Tuition for them?
So it was, it was quite an evening. And then, of course, on Sunday, graduation, I think that went very well. Really, I received a lot of compliments from parents, and they really liked, they like using the convocation center, because we don't have to limit tickets. You know, the convocation center moves you in and moves you out pretty efficiently, there's plenty of parking, they just have it down, and it's air-conditioned, so it's hot. We don't have to swelter like we did in the past. And with the rake seating, everybody can seat. And I think the students really loved the jumbotron. They were, they're all, I think their necks were all craned up there to see if they were on the camber. But that, again, was organized very well and went very, very well, and so hats off to Tim and his staff for organizing a great honors night and a great graduation. And hopefully tomorrow, we have a great teacher recognition day, so looking forward to that is what...
I'm going to jump in just on the tail end of the high school. I had a chance to attend the middle school eighth grade recognition event last night, which went also very smoothly. Lots of students recognized and a lot of hard work that's come to fruition, and now they all move up to the high school. So kudos to Mr. Clavitt and the high school, or the middle school administration and the staff for pulling that off, it went off really well.
Anything else for community reports? Suspension report. New school year. Yep.
Thanks, Steve.
Can't come soon enough. Well, I'll turn it over then to Assistant Superintendent for Business Services.
Thanks, Jim. First item that I have under the agenda tonight, I have a couple special guests with me tonight, so I have Dr. Mike Jacoby, who's the executive director for the Illinois Association of School Business Officials, and then David Bine, he's the president-elect for this year, he will become the president of the board next week. So I'm going to ask Dr. Jacoby to come up.
Thank you very much, and we won't take a lot of your time, but really appreciate you letting us come out here for just a few minutes. So we're here for two reasons. One is to honor Nicole and her service on our board of directors, which is a big deal. I mean, there's only three elected each year across the whole state, and Nicole came on our board three years ago, she's finishing her three-year term as director. We also come here to honor the district as well, because we know when a leader is committed to professional engagement such as an association like ours, or IASB, or IESA, there's time commitment associated with that that is, that needs the support of the school district. And so thank you to Superintendent Wilder and to the board here for being willing to support Nicole as she has been a part of our board of directors while she had a baby and, you know, so she's been a very busy person. But it's just, we think important for us to thank the district and also to acknowledge people when they've finished their service with us. We have a check from our foundation, which is all done by donations, that will go through Nicole to your foundation here, and David will say a few words.
Thank you. Ford, just want to reiterate what Mike just shared with you. It is so important to our state to have leaders who step up to help lead an association. And the Illinois Association of School Business Officials, we believe, provides a real vital service and support, not just for students here in Sycamore, but across our state and indeed with an influence around our country. And for the work that Nicole has done, it's been really important. She is a quiet leader who has a presence at our meetings that brings something to the table, represent your district and the rest of our state. And through her work and her service, she has improved the education of school business officials, has improved their ability to provide support, to make sure that resources are available at the right place in the right time to educate students across our state, and it's really important. Nicole has been an incredible asset to the association, and we are really sad to see her go. She is really valuable in her leadership, you're lucky to have her, and Nicole, you're not off the hook, Illinois asks, but we'll still be looking for you to continue your leadership in the association by your presence and participation, and we're really going to be excited about that. And I would like to present to you this check that is made payable to the Sycamore Education Foundation in recognition for the service that you've done. It's just a little white.
It was a good business, but just open it up right away.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you very much.
Okay. The next couple items I have, our second readings for our student fees and our building use fees. So at the first reading, the board had a couple questions, comments, so I have a couple slides to share with you guys to hopefully further that information that you were looking for, if not, please stop and ask any questions that you have, so...
Well, before you go any further, we should just take a minute and express our appreciation as a board, as a district, for your service. And that's something that we've had a tradition now for, starting with Luke, I think, that we really, you know, have stood behind the school business officials and their organization, your organization. And it's served us, I think, very well over time, but for you to put in the time and to represent us and to do so in such an effective manner that you would have representatives come here and address us this evening, I think is very impressive. So just please accept on behalf of the board our congratulations and our thanks for representing the district and for all the work that you do every day. And the same to your staff as well, I know you couldn't do it all without some help. So I know that they make a difference, too, but kudos to you and to your staff, and just thank you.
Thank you, guys.
And just keep up the good work.
I tried to get him to let him stay on another year, because we lost that whole year of COVID.
Yes.
Unfortunately, they said no.
Okay, now you can go.
Okay. Down to business, right?
You were going too fast there.
Yeah, I was trying to just...
You almost made it.
So the first thing that, there were a couple questions on last time, was just the parking pass and looking at that fee and if it's something that we thought that needed to be lowered. And so what I have here in front of you guys... So there were some questions about how many parking spaces that we actually have at the high school, so I reached out to Mr. Carlson, and we have about 450 parking spots there. And we had talked about maybe we had lowered the fee a couple years ago, and so I did confirm we did lower it from 160 to 120 back in fiscal year 17, and that actually was done through Spartan Senate, it's something that they brought forward and asked if we could lower that fee. And then the other question came up of how many juniors and seniors are actually riding the bus and if it would make more sense for them to be able to utilize the parking pass. We currently have 85 signed up, but I'll tell you, probably half of those actually ride on a daily basis. We bring in about $50,000 every year, with the exception of fiscal year '21, just because we were hybrid then, but usually it's about $50,000 that we bring in. And then on the bottom there, I did do a comparison to other school districts and what they charge for their parking pass, and I feel like we're very comparable with the other school districts. And I think since we lowered it a couple years ago, I feel like we're in a good place with the fee that we brought forward. So if there's any other questions on that, I'd be happy to answer them.
Is that revenue earmarked? Do you go to parking lot upkeep or anything, or no?
So the money is deposited into the O&M fund, so it can be used...
But it isn't just set aside for that?
Right, it just goes into that fund generally, yeah.
What's our regular maintenance cost for the parking lot? I mean, how often do we have to have it repaved, and what's the...
Should or have?
Yeah, it's two different groups now.
Should, I guess.
Yeah, so we have resurfaced that parking lot once in the last 10 years. I want to say it was approximately $250,000. So I, you know, I guess you could say that money is maybe earmarked to help go towards that, but not at this point.
And the answer to your question really is about every 10 years, as long as you're doing seal coating in between.
And that's why we haven't done it.
If you don't seal coating, it's not going to last.
Yeah. Yep. We were kind of slapping on the seal coating just because that was something that got pushed to the side. But Mark's got us on a really good rotation, so I feel like we'll be good going forward.
Of course, we have snow removal and salt and other stuff.
Yeah, and the salt, the salt really is hard on those parking lots. Okay, and then the other question that came up during the first reading was athletic fees and if that was something that we wanted to look at potentially raising. And I did reach out to Mr. Carrick, and he wasn't opposed to that at all, but we did some more digging and just wanted to share some more information with you guys. So we did increase our single sport fee back in fiscal year '18, we went from $100 to $125. And then we also raised our family cap from $250 to $310. So same thing down here at the bottom, I did a comparison to those same school districts. So a lot of school districts differentiate their middle school and high school sports, which we've always had the same fee here, so that's something we might want to explore moving forward. And then we're really one of the only schools that have a family cap, so most school districts, you just, you just pay. So if you have five kids and three different sports, you just pay that single sport fee. So, and just looking at us compared to other school districts, we're actually really high on athletic fees. So again, just talking with Mr. Carrick, we felt like since we raised it already once, we felt like we were comparable, so the recommendation is to just keep it as is. We did talk about maybe potentially looking at that family cap, and if that's something we either want to raise higher or eliminate potentially. So I think that's a route that we could look at moving forward. But other than that, the recommendation is to keep it the same. Any questions on that?
Do you know how many people are using the family cap or who are any subject to it?
I don't know off the top of my head. There's a lot of families, so...
He presented eight years ago.
Yeah.
And the athletic costs are covered by this revenue already, so is that...
The athletic...
The cost to run the programs?
No.
Not even close?
Not even close.
Not even close, okay. So raising the fees to mitigate, that's not even reasonable.
When I asked about it several years ago, it was about a half million dollars is what it costs from the, that aren't covered by the fees, if you look at coaching.
It covers your operating costs, it doesn't cover the personnel fees.
A lot of their operating costs are provided for by the boosters as well, who donate uniforms.
Yeah, boosters typically gives the district about $75,000 a year to help with the numbers.
I'm kind of hoping we'll keep things as they are, considering, you know, I've always talked about my hate for school fees, I used to tell parents that, you know, school fees, the athletic fees, they have more kids than in athletics, it's awful for a lot of families. And I know you would work with them if necessary, but, you know, having it at 125, to me is, I mean, I've been there and done there, having more than one kid in sports, and it's a lot of money when you're, you know, trying to maintain everything else.
And that point, I just, I can't wrap my head around, and again, like with the parking lot fees, if it's not, if it's barely making, if it isn't making a dent, does it ever raise the question, should we just stop charging them altogether? Or what does that look like? What kind of, I mean, and again, I don't think we'll decide that here and now, but, I mean, as far as access to these programs, I just hate the idea of segmenting people based on monetary cost, when it'd be really nice if we could work towards having it just built into our expense, again, while we're, you know, dreaming or making a wish list. But to your point, Jolene, I mean, how far, you're talking about the gap being a million dollars there, I mean, to me that's...
That's the loss, so if you took out the fees, you could add to that, I'm trying to pull up...
Yeah, would you add 200, I mean, that's where I'd be wondering, is it...
Yeah, we probably, we probably bring in between $300 and $400,000 in running for athletic fees, so, I mean, if that went away...
You'd have to buy, you'd have to have another program to get that money.
You have to make up that revenue.
Can that be a hit?
Yeah.
See, I guess I would say I'm definitely not in favor of raising the fees then.
And we do extend our students who... And we do extend our students who are free, that's extended to athletic fees also. So they do not have to pay the athletic fees.
What was that? I, like the...
Our students who are free.
Like free and reduced lunch?
Yeah, so who qualify for free, that's extended, those waivers are extended to athletics.
And that's an elect, that's something that we elect to do, or is that state mandated?
No, it's something that we elect to do.
That's a nice policy.
Well, I think my biggest issue with the whole thing in general is just the arbitrary nature of it. We have no formula, we have no cost sharing, we're just picking a number and looking at what other districts are charging and saying, well, it looks close, so that's good. And that goes for every fee, every whatever. It would be nicer as a representative of the taxpayer to be able to say, here's the formula we're using. And yeah, I think that that's a prudent cost sharing between the taxpayers who are covering everything versus the people causing the most, I guess, use of that, you know, that activity or facility or whatever it is. And maybe everything is appropriate where it's at right now, but it'd be nice to be able to say, yeah, there's a reason we charge 40 bucks for this class or $6 for this lock or $100 for this parking pass. And it's because we know this is the lifespan of it. We think the taxpayer should, you know, carry the burden of 60% of that and 40% on the end user. Because ultimately, it is, if every dollar that you're not charging in a fee is coming from another academic program to some extent. And then it's up to you as a board or a community to weigh which of those is more important. Is it more important that we have sports access to everyone or that we have a science class or an instructional coach available to everyone? Because one of those is going to have to give if you aren't getting that funding from somewhere else, because we can't raise the taxes, the taxes are locked.
I wish we could do a state-by-state comparison, because I know my sister lives in New York City and they don't pay school fees. And you know, other people, we come to the district to register, they're like, I have to pay a school fee and it's 100, whatever it is.
Yeah.
And it's very difficult to say, yeah, you gotta pay this and, you know, yeah, we have ways to deal with it. But it's the worst part of my job.
Sure, right. What you have to compare is what the state of New York then pays the school, whereas the state of Illinois pays the schools.
I know, it's a whole...
If you can get rid of enough things to get rid of that student fee as well, is that the direction we ultimately want to go. I would just like to have some way, whether it's sports fees or anything, to be able to say, here's how we came up with this value approximately, other than just, well, it's what we've used since 2000, and it looks competitive to other schools, because we don't know what, how they're coming up with their numbers.
Sure. I think that would probably be a recurring theme in each school district is there's not a formula behind everything. And I would say probably the reason why is because we probably find that we're not charging enough to cover.
But the parking one sounds pretty reasonable. I mean, if you're telling me that it's 250,000 over 10 years plus some seal coating in there, then, you know, collecting that kind of revenue seems...
You raise 50,000, that's 500,000. You can replace it once, you can seal coat it two or three times. That's, that's pretty close. But you're, you're never going to get these to line up, to be honest with you.
Because of personnel costs.
Yeah, it's just personnel, yeah.
And there are some school districts that don't charge athletic fees at all. So I don't know where those are absorbed, but...
But I'm not opposed to, like you said, whatever our comfort level is, the user pays 20% or 30%, you know, that means that that number is 140 instead of 125 or 89 or whatever it's out to be. I'm not opposed to looking at that. The rationale is...
Right. You just have to know it would go up each year and just because, you know, salaries go up.
Yeah, and you do have to then be, the formula has to be tied to something, but at least we have a rationale.
But that's the point, is like, this went, this went 20 years without being adjusted. So the taxpayer was paying more for it, or it was, and it was coming out of other programs as we left that untouched and the cost of that program ballooned. So I think the last time we did see numbers from Carrick, I mean, I think, I think over that 20 years, the cost of that program almost doubled. I mean, just looking at inflations and salaries and whatnot, you know that the cost of that program went up. So if we weren't collecting that extra revenue, it was, it was bleeding from somewhere else. You know, some classroom was getting less and less per year out of budget to keep that going. So it'd be nice to have some way to revisit and say, how did our cost change this year? And, you know, there's a threshold, it doesn't mean it has to go up $2.87 each year, but, you know, once it gets five or $10 out of, out of balance, okay, now we need to reassess. It'd just be nice to have, to be able to look at it and have something to hang our hat on that is, is more scientific, projective.
All right. Then the only other thing I had, the board had asked to look at some Oscar financials. And so what I did is I went back, I went back five years, and then I have the current year that we're in, and then I have next year's budget in there. So we know that Oscar has always made the district a lot of money. There's always a surplus in that program. When we looked at adding Oscar Junior on in '20, we knew that that program itself was not going to make money for the first five years. So Mrs. Walls had shared with us, maybe she's here tonight, maybe? Yep, there she is. And she had shared, you know, this is a program that we feel is needed in the district, but we know that Oscar can, the Oscar program itself can absorb those costs. And then in fiscal year '20, COVID happened. And so we started that program, and you can see, we actually almost netted a surplus in '20, even with everything shutting down at the end of the school year. And we were still able to pay all of our Oscar staff that year, which was, which was great. And then in '21, we know that Oscar was not open to our community, it was only open for our staff. And so obviously, we knew that year was not going to even come close to having any sort of surplus. Now we're currently in fiscal year '22, so we have our revenues and expenses through the middle of May. So we are running a slight deficit. Again, we knew that was going to happen because of Oscar Junior. And then next year projected that deficit's getting smaller each year as we are able to grow Oscar Junior, bring in more revenue, and just grow our Oscar program in general. So those are the numbers I wanted to share with you guys tonight. If you have any questions on that, I can help answer or, like I said, put these out in the audience, too, if you guys have any questions for her.
I guess, why is the overall Oscar revenue expected to stay so depressed from where we left off in FY, you know, '18, '19 for the foreseeable future?
So it's Oscar Junior that's driving that deficit?
Well, no, I'm just looking at the top line, the Oscar revenue. FY '19, you're bringing in 800,000 of revenue and...
Well, '20 and '21, let's just scrap those when I'm looking at those years.
So we dropped from 800 to 660.
Yep. And then in '22, we did our summer program last summer, which falls under fiscal year '22. We only ran it at half the capacity.
Correct. So we usually run it at 200, we added at 100.
Yep.
I would tell you, we'll get back to that number. I'm a really, very small financialist.
She's a conservative.
I, I know that's what our numbers look like. I will tell you, with the change in times of school, I haven't seen our after-school numbers grow as much, but I think a lot of families are still working from home. I do see that number, even with inquiries changing. For instance, like our summer program, we filled in one hour, all 150 spots. So I do see it upticking. It just definitely took a turn with the change of time with schools. And then parents still working from home with that ability, but I do see that very much changing within the next year. So I'm just being a little conscious still about my financials.
And we're still not at 100% for summer, right, Courtney? Are you usually at 200?
Yeah. So we are still in a smaller capacity with Southbury because every elementary is getting a lot of construction done still. So I do anticipate to go back to 200 next summer. And I think families will be happy. I have 150 that we enrolled, and I had 50 on the waiting list within the next hour, so.
That revenue is all derived from fees? I see, like, looking at that, to me, that is so impressive. Like, first of all, I love the way that that's laid out, so it really makes a lot of sense. But also, the fact that we can have a 6:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. semi-instructional supervised time and run it on purely fees and still run nearly close to balance with a five-year goal of being, having a surplus, to me is like the gold standard of how an education system should work. So the more I've done, the more I've learned about what Oscar is doing and like how this works and the level of access it gives to, to working parents and things, to me, I'm just, I'm 100, this is awesome. This is really exciting to me to see this. So I really am hopeful that Oscar Junior hits those marks that you're talking about for five-year period. And I'd love to see if you could have, you know, I guess on all levels, like you were talking, three to 22. I mean, it gives me goosebumps to see this level of, of offering. And again, to run this tight. Because if you compare even our school district finances to this, the amount of money that's subsidized by the state and by the federal government, I mean, it's, it would look really poor compared to Oscar's numbers. So I think that speaks volumes. And I was looking on the website, like, seven to one was the ratio, it's seven or 10 to one for students? Like, that's awesome. So...
Yeah, this program's really embedded in our community, and it's such a unique thing also. I mean, when I talk with other school districts, we're like one of, maybe there's one other district around us that runs it through the school district. Typically, it's run through, you know, the YMCA or another community partnership. So it's really unique to us to be able to do this through the school district. So Courtney's been in a amazing job, so, yeah.
Yeah, if you did this for sports, it would be a bleak...
Oh, Charles, you might have a heart attack. So that's all I had. So the fees that I'm recommending are staying the same from the first reading. So I would just ask the board to approve the fiscal year '22 student fees.
Is there a motion to approve the student fees as presented?
This number.
Second. Any discussion? Any further discussion, I guess I should say?
No, I did just find on, from the FY '18 presentation, just for information, that at the time, Mr. Carrick identified that there were about 78 families that had hit the family cap.
Anything else? Roll call?
Ren?
Yes.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Davy?
Yes.
DeVito?
Present.
Nelson?
Yes.
Dombek?
Yes.
Motion carried. And then the last thing I have is building use fees. There weren't any questions last time. There's no changes to bring forward to you guys. So I would again ask for that to be approved for that specific year.
Is there a motion to approve the building use fees as presented?
Same.
Moved and seconded, discussion? Roll call.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Davy?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Ren?
Yes.
Dombek?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Superintendent's report.
I only have one item in the superintendent's report at this meeting, and it's my pleasure to introduce the Honorable Representative Jeff Keiker, who represents not just our school district in our community, but the larger area. We've, although it's been a challenge to get Mr. Keiker scheduled, we made it happen tonight and invited him to just give us a little bit of a legislative update on how things are going in Springfield. So my pleasure to turn the floor over to Mr. Keiker.
Would you like to read the bio before I proceed?
Yeah.
Everybody ready for summer? So I appreciate you having me and thank you for accommodating me. I thought I'd do a general overview of the things that we saw in the legislature, the things that we see going on in the state of Illinois right now. I did bring our list of substantial bills that did pass. So if anybody has any specific questions, I've got a reference that we can go over. Obviously, the past year has not been an easy year. We have been in, in this state, what I would call a sugar rush, right? In schools, higher education. Most government entities have seen that, where we had an influx of federal dollars come and support a lot of projects that we have going on in our communities. Unfortunately, that's going to go away. And the state of Illinois, I don't think, has planned appropriately for that. So I have, I have some worries about where that's going in a general overview sense, because we are perhaps sacrificing the concept of having an election this June and November for what would be good fiscal policy and arguably a big hole that Illinois has dug itself into over the past couple of decades that we should be more diligent towards reconciling. For example, one of the things that we've done with the grocery receipts, we're going to mandate the 1% be removed from the grocery receipts, from the grocery sales. And on the receipt, we're going to put, please thank the governor and the General Assembly for passing this. We're going to hold off, not implement, but hold off for six months the implementation of the motor fuel tax, which is going to save 2.2 cents per gallon on the gas tank at the pump. And we're going to mandate that every pump at every gas station go ahead and put up a sign that says, hey, we did this for you, so don't forget. It's a pittance. And we should have had more adults in the room, more adult behavior with how we do with our fiscal policies. Because there are things like this with education, where we just funded the minimum 350 for the education benefit, or the education funding formula. So we could have put more money in that. We could have put additional dollars towards the pension debt, that is arguably the largest issue that the state of Illinois has hanging over it right now. Things in education specifically that we worked on, you know, unfortunately, we get a lot of mandates that we passed on to you guys. I think in my first year, the book that I was given, we had 220 individual mandates that we passed on to school districts in that one year. Not, not a two-year General Assembly, but in that one year. I'm working with my colleagues on the higher education appropriation. I'm the ranking Republican for appropriations at the higher education level, to try to come up with a system where we give education a break. We can't continue to change the playing field on you guys. Teachers, students, educators, leaders, parents, community members, we can't continue to change year to year what we're doing and what direction we're doing. So we're trying to come up with a system whereby we only pass substantial changes and alterations on a by-year basis. So that we give folks a chance to get used to it. I've got buy-in from my peer, LaShawn Ford, who's the Chair of Higher Education Appropriations, and that's something we're going to see if we can implement next year. Believe it or not, folks, I don't know if you were aware, but we are still living under Governor Pritzker's emergency orders. As of today, he has still continued to pass orders. His last orders signed were April 29th. So at the conclusion of the 30 days, it's my sincerest hope that we allow the functioning of government to resume as it did before COVID, and that any significant changes that happen after that, that we address on an upcoming basis as those need to be addressed. We have passed a mandate for you guys to offer 30 minutes of unstructured time. So we want you to fit that into your daily schedule in the next school year. Unstructured time, not playground time, not time in the classroom to do whatever you want. Unstructured time, no instruction. So fit that into your schedule, please, if you can. Again, another mandate that's taking away from some of the issues that we need to address in the classroom. Mental health has become a significant issue. I was removed from the Mental Health Committee when I assumed the Higher Education Appropriations seat. But mental health, we are taking that very seriously. We had, leaving the dollar amount of $75 million towards some experimental programs, where we're trying to put more and additional mental health experts into the classroom, because that's so needed right now in our society, as evidenced by the tragedy that we saw occur earlier today. We see some gamesmanship on some of the activities that the treasurer's engaging, especially in IEP meetings with Able Account Disclosures, where he's seeking to get his name into every household, account and benefit account. We've got some political gamesmanship that shouldn't be happening in the Illinois school system, that unfortunately, we can't pull out. So what we have pushed for within a minority, a bipartisan minority, is that any disclosure that needs to go out in a campaign-type situation, year, time, calendar, that it be from the taxpayers of the state of Illinois instead of the treasurer or the comptroller. So that we don't have somebody's name, like you will see on your tax rebate coming from the state of Illinois, you will see a physical check with Susanna Mindoes and Michael Farrarik's name signed at the bottom, giving you dollars, fortunately, right before you have the opportunity to vote for them in the polling, in the polling place. So, yeah, there's that. So, can you tell I'm a little riled up? We have mandates on lunches that'll continue to be passed. We have mandates on holidays for civic engagement. We have holidays or mandated time off for voting. We have personnel recruitment issues that fortunately, we worked on. We worked on some scholarship funds on the Higher Education Appropriation Committee, because there is a teacher shortage. There's a substitution issue with subs being able to come in and work the hours that we need them to work. So we've been working on those. We've been attempting to reduce, and I shouldn't say reduce, refine educator licensing. It's a, it's a mess, right? Some things have two years, some things have three years. We've got a five-year cycle, we've got so many things. So Representative Crespo and I, my peer from Hoffman Estates, we have looked at trying to refine and unify that, so everybody's on the same calendar. We're not double doing on some of these education concepts that we're asking professionals to engage in, that we're very focused and very specific on what we want that to do. Our goal has continued to be to provide assets and resources to our local school districts. So we do have an additional $350 million that's been allocated towards the funding formula. I hope to see that increase. I hope to see that continue to bloom. But my biggest fear is going back to the gamesmanship that we saw with some of these one-time tax benefits that weren't necessarily fixing the problems that are out there. Because if you, if you think that the benefits that Illinois is seeing right now will continue into the immediate future, I think we have some reckoning around the corner that arguably is, is going to hit us pretty abruptly over the course of the the corner that arguably is going to hit us pretty abruptly over the course of the next two years. And we need to plan for that. So that's what we're working on. What questions can I answer for you? Rosie, right? Rosie! It's been a tough season, folks. It's been a really tough season. I think the benefit to schools, higher education, and elementary, secondary education has been that we adjourned on April 8th. We didn't have to be down there until May 31st. So that gave us a shorter calendar. It gave us a lesser window to be able to pass consequential mandates on teachers, educators, administrations, and school district operating expenses. What do you want to know? I tried to talk fast. I tried to cover a lot of things. I don't mean to be all doom and gloom, but we have some very adult questions and issues that need to be answered in this state, and especially surrounding education and mental health. And we need to stop doing one-patch jobs. We need to have a holistic discussion. We have working groups that should be seeking answers to these problems. And unfortunately, we don't see that. I want to thank, you know, the administration and the educators for always being available. When I have questions on the floor and on bills, I reach out. And we have had fantastic feedback and dialogue on what the impact the Sycamore community and other school districts in northern Illinois will experience. So I thank you for that dialogue. And I also thank you for the professional development. I think that is something that is underappreciated in this day and age with not just board officers and educators, but leadership in general, and the professional trade association, to give back, to learn more, and to continue to refine and get better. Isn't that what our mission is in education anyway? And we should be stewards of making sure that our kids do that going forward in their life.
I do have a question. You know, speaking of what happened today, I feel like, you know, we're all up in arms and upset and sad and everything. And you're talking about how you're working on mental health. I feel like we've become so complacent. This happened, and we're going to move on, and it'll be back there, and we'll forget about it. Yeah, we're working on mental health. And coming from that field, what are you doing to make it better for our kids? Because obviously, it ain't being done right now. We've got kids like this going into a school and shooting.
There are big issues. So, and don't hold me to the exact number. There was a mental health pilot program that was introduced. I believe the allocation was $75 million to be able to put more social workers into the classroom. There were additional federal dollars, and I'm unaware if you guys know, that were in a similar program to be able to put more towards mental health and resources to be able to do that. But that's another example of things that we could have done with, instead of spending a billion dollars on pork projects out of COVID dollars, that we wound up putting in Democrat-owned districts. So we took a little over a billion dollars, and we're doing things in districts that arguably we could have launched very impactful programs. And instead, it's an election year, so we should show up at ribbon cuttings and do that because that short-term gain for the next two years is more important than funding worthy projects. I know it's not a complete answer, right? I do, my peer who was running the mental health committee at the time, Frank Hurley, and I had long discussions about trying to find resources to do that. The challenge that we've run into, especially with mental health, and this gets into noneducation area, especially with mental health, and I don't mean to sound alarm or anything of that sort, but the state of Illinois has passed some very cost-consequential decisions on how we treat our healthcare dollars that we have that are going to squeeze the mental health dollars. And not that their plight is not important, but the state of Illinois just passed a rule, in spite of the Medicaid and Medicare working group not approving the rule, we passed a bill that will fund 100% the Medicaid costs for undocumented folks in the United States, in the state of Illinois. That money is not reimbursed at the federal level, similar to what those federal dollars are. And that is going to further squeeze at 100% volume, instead of a 50% volume, the amount of budget that the state of Illinois has to spend on mental health and other healthcare for those in need that are already there. As this program launches July 1st, I don't know what our governor's launch program will look like when that goes out, but the word of that will spread fast. My biggest fear is we're going to have folks from every country in the world, every state in this nation, that are going to need heart transplants. They're going to need bypass surgery. They're going to need to have leg surgery. And where are they going to go to do it? They're going to come here, and that's going to continue to exasperate the amount of limited funds that we have. So I, again, grave concerns that we're making one-time gimmick things instead of being adults and looking at the long-term vision. But I think most of you are pretty aware, I'm a State Farm agent here in town, right? I'm doing this to try to help the state of Illinois. And it greatly frustrates me when you go to the state capitol to try to solve some of these problems, it gets diverted for things that are blatantly gimmicks. And the folks that would normally cover this, the reporters, the news folks that are normally in the state capitol, I think the number that I saw was in the early 2000s, there were 26 reporters stationed at the state capitol. Today, there's about six or eight. Okay? So all the things that we're doing, they don't any longer need to be in back rooms. They could be out in front of everybody because there's nobody there to watch. There's nobody there to report back. To the point that when I share some of the information of things that we've passed, people are like, you're making that up. You're a politician. You're speaking out of the list. It's happening, and we need to have better transparency about it, and we need to be more attentive to the obligations that we've already taken. Pension, healthcare, education are some of those big ones that I have heard time and again are most important for us to address today and not to continue to defer those needs. What we saw this spring was a deferral with the aid of state dollars that is going to arguably make our governor look great right before he goes for his presidential election. So. And by the way, we changed the election. Is everybody excited about that, right? Everybody's kind of looking down. Our election date did change because of the census delays and the remaps that are out there. So the maps that went into effect, the primary is June 28th. So I would encourage everybody, no matter who you're voting for, please get out, participate in our electoral process because that's what's most important to make sure our democracy works. What else you want to know?
I have a question for you, Mr. Keicker. Speaking of pension obligations and other things, how does, or how do you see Illinois ranking, at least against our surrounding states, as far as attractiveness for teachers? You talked about some of the things that you guys are doing at the state level to try and make the licensing, you know, easier. The pension, you know, they've basically eviscerated the pension system, at least for newly hired teachers. And we're going to, you know, boards and budgets are still going to be strapped to making the existing pension obligation payments, you know, for the foreseeable future. And it's not likely that the current market conditions are helping the state of that pension either. How do we stack up? You know, how are we going to compete in the next decade for those, what teachers there are graduating from school?
So the first thing that I would say is our pension obligations that we have made as a state, school districts, to teachers, educators, first responders, firefighters, police officers, that is a sacred oath the government has made to them in perpetuity. And if we can't go back and change that, it's in our constitution. We need to own and step up. And unfortunately, to this point in time, all we've seen is people trying to say there's a game and a way around it to manipulate it. It's just not there. We need to be adults, and we need to own what the pension ramp that was put into place in the 90s has done for us. And we need to make sure we're growing our economy so that we can bring additional dollars into the state of Illinois and meet that. One of the bigger challenges that we have is as tier-one pensioners are going to retire, there's going to be fewer funds going into the pension. The tier-two is arguably, if not in fact, not meeting the sufficiency requirement the Social Security Administration has put out there. So even with the tier-two pension, that's arguably the solution that some people will talk about, it's not the solution because we're going to have to bring additional billions of dollars to the table late in the night when nobody else can afford it. We don't have the dollars. So I have grave fear of that pension piece and where it's going. You know, our governor, over the course of the last few months, has gone around talking about how Illinois' bond rating has improved by three notches. Yeah, the state received $26 billion in federal money. I certainly hope that we've been able to spend a part of that towards things that we've been obligated to do, and that's improved our pension position. We are still, and at the time, we were one grade above junk, right? You couldn't go anywhere else. We were one grade above junk. So now we're three grades above junk. And we are still the lowest bond-rated state that's out there. So we are still paying a higher interest on the debts that we incur because of not taking serious considerations. And the unemployment issue is a whole other piece there. To your question on the attractiveness of education, you know, there are hurdles out there in many trades. First responders are seeing it. Educators are seeing it. Many trades are seeing just a degrading of who's there. My anecdotal evidence is we see a lot of baby boomers that are taking early retirement, right? We see a lot of people that say, listen, after COVID, after all the headaches that I've had to deal with, I'm going to step back. I'm going to take life easy. I'm going to enjoy what I have now while I can because it's more precious to me now. We also have a demographic shift. So the numbers are close to, from 2005 to 2035, we see a population decrease going through as graduating seniors in Illinois high schools. We see a reduction from about 154,000 seniors graduating to about 118,000 students graduating. So that natural population of folks that are coming through our system is shrinking. So we're already seeing part of that, and I think we're seeing part of that in the job force. So how do we attract it? On the higher education committee, we have two scholarship programs. Go into Golden Apple and grow your own. Golden Apple is absolutely an amazing program. I have asked and demanded multiple times that we expand the Golden Apple Scholars Program. It puts excellent and qualified teachers in our classroom with mentor and peer support. And the outputs from that program are second to none. Golden Apple and I have had discussions about my excitement at expanding that. And I think that's a key piece to being able to do that. Because you're growing through support, professionals like we have in the room, that are able to then have a network so that they, when they incur their frustrations and their doubts as they're going through early in their career and exploring it, they have the ability to do that. So I think a piece is proper training, proper support, making sure that's there. And the scholarship program, where we will forgive part of the dollars that they incur towards going for their teacher certification and dollars that way. We also did pass, many institutions weren't happy about it, but we did pass minimum teacher salary requirements as well two years ago, I believe it was. So hopefully that that adds an attractive nature. But I think you and I both know that the secret to solving any of these problems where you have a reduction in bodies is making sure that the incentives are there to have people come in, right? So you can, on the backend, complain all somebody wants to do about where our pension is and say that we shouldn't have the front-end salaries. But without the front-end salaries, we're not getting the best and the brightest. We are not attracting enough people. So we've got to offer an attractive enough upfront opportunity to have people come in the door. And I think that's how we help solve it. We've got to fix the pension. We've got to fix the attractiveness. We've got to give that support network as you're going through your career growth.
Is that tuition debt forgiveness? Is that tied to employment in Illinois?
Some are. So there's a couple different programs. Some are, some are tied to means testing. I spoke against soup shears that would have literally been, I don't remember the number, I don't want to quote the number because I don't remember. It was so significant, that every single person, regardless of means, regardless of wealth, regardless of parents, regardless of scholarship, would have 100% of their debt forgiven. And we need to make sure that that is going towards some of our black and brown peers that want to come into the classroom so that we can grow a diverse segment within our schools. And that needs to be addressed first. We need to make sure that we're showing kids in the classroom, people that look like them, act like them, have the same life experiences as them, so that they're comfortable being in the classroom. Is that fair? What else? Give me more. Anyone want to talk about roads?
Yes, but not tonight.
Our parking lots are great.
I hear. I hear.
Well-funded.
So I would also suggest, on the parking fee structure, I don't know if it's something the high school could do, but wouldn't it be great to have an incentive for freshmen? If you do, not necessarily academic, but if you do so many things, we're going to give a cut on the parking permit. Once kids want to park, right?
Freshmen don't have parking permits.
Yeah? Once kids want to park, I mean, wouldn't we want to motivate them to do it?
Yeah. Freshmen don't have parking permits.
No, but you have to do it the freshman year so that when they apply for their permit, their sophomore or junior year, they know what the program is, have a more than equal value.
I have actually a number of questions.
Yeah!
And first and foremost, from my perspective, when I sit here, one of the things that I see that's very disheartening is that, as you mentioned, more and more mandates from Springfield. And it seems to me that we have a lot of legislators who want to be school board members. And they're resting local control. And I don't know if there's any talk in Springfield, or if there's any recognition in Springfield about the fact that the state legislature is taking away local control from school boards. And by and large, it seems to me that a majority of these mandates are driven by situations that arise out of the Chicago school system, which is quite unique and quite different from all the downstate school systems. So I just wondered if there's any chatter about that, or any acknowledgement of that, or any way to maybe combat that.
I may sound a little partisan in my answer, so I apologize.
Well, I hope you do.
So I have been, I am a firm believer that the administration, the board, parents, and educators especially should come together and decide at the local level what's best for their students. Yes, there are some statewide issues, and we've got to make sure we have a framework in place. But I have been an ardent supporter for making sure that we have local control and fewer mandates. We've talked about the idea of allowing a certain segment of negotiating groups, the board, and the administration, and parents on cost-consequential mandates that we push down to school districts, that with a certain vote threshold of those four groups, you could overcome the need to implement the mandate until funding is attached to it. If we give dollars, you got to do it. If we don't give dollars, it's up to you to decide whether you're going to spend the money on it. Now, there are a bunch of mandates that they pass that say, well, this shouldn't apply to this, this shouldn't apply to this. So it's got a bunch of holes in it. But the general idea is, what tools can we give to the local groups to be able to do in their buildings what they see fit to do for their locality? I passed a bill that unfortunately was hijacked by a senator that did that at the, every property tax governing body, with the exception of schools, cities, and counties, because they are otherwise defined in the Illinois Constitution. Now that this has been signed by the governor, we'll have the opportunity, once every 10 years, to do a survey of those that they serve, review the services they provide, specifically ask whether they should consolidate, eliminate, expand any of those services, or combine with other units of government. And once every 10 years, they then present that to the public so that the public is on notice of what does that unit of government actually do. And the public can then debate and decide whether that unit is still fulfilling its mission, and whether it needs to be merged with another unit, taken over by another unit, expanded services, or you know what? You're doing exactly what I want you to do. And the reason I wanted that to pass is we need to more and more, as a state of Illinois, get out of the way of the decisions that you guys make here in the local level. And I'm, Jim, I'm with you 100%. I would love nothing better. And that goes to the year of waiting, or the concept of waiting every two years on passing anything. We need to allow you guys to flourish and do things that you want. Because there's amazingly creative things, and Jen, I'm going to point to you, with some of the stuff, some of the grant applications that you came to the SEF Board when my wife was serving on SEF, and seen some of the amazing things that you piloted that we now see in every classroom in the district, right? When we allow for that local creativity, when we don't put so many rules around it, we allow educators and administrators, parents, board members to flourish with creative solutions to problems that they encounter in their locality. And then you know what happens? Is we have a district 40 miles away that says, do you know what they're doing in Sycamore? Here's what they did. Here's what it cost them. They started out this way. And you know what? We saw test scores increase. We saw engagement increase. We saw a reduction in the costs of acquiring textbooks because this is the platform that they went on. Until we allow fewer rules, we won't have that creativity and that diversity of thought on how we solve our problems. And if we go back, that's the origins of education, right? So I'm with you. If I had a solution, I'd be there with you. We have seen, unfortunately, and this is my political side, we have seen, unfortunately, this governor support significantly, both financially and with some of these givebacks that he's put into legislation, very progressive members of the General Assembly. And they frequently have education and social mandates outside of the mission of schools in general that they're seeking to implement and put into place. So we see a frequency of them increasing, not a better. So elections have consequences, and I hope everybody takes that into account when they vote in the Congress.
I hope you can foster that same attitude among some of your colleagues.
And I will say, Jim, it is a bipartisan concern, okay? So Katie Stewart, she was one of my peers on higher education. She works in higher education space. And she is just as frustrated because when a lot of these mandates happen, you are right to the point that it is a one-off situation. It often happens in an entirely different school dynamic than we see here in Sycamore. And so the fit that's mandated doesn't necessarily fit in the nice little Sycamore leaf that we have carved out for ourselves. So we need to get away from that. And she's on board with that. A couple of my other peers are on board with doing that. But until we have leadership support for doing that, from my peers on the other side of the aisle, I don't know that we'll see that anytime soon. So keep smiling.
Well, you got to give me something to smile about.
Yeah. So I will. So.
Well, another question I have is you talked briefly at least about consultation. And I know your predecessor had assembled a great, you know, kind of educational group that, that he called together on, on many occasions to give him some feedback, especially on pending legislation.
Yes.
And I don't, I don't know if you've done that or not, I, you know, I, I haven't heard anything about that or seen anything about that.
Yeah.
And I just wonder, what's your process when it comes to voting on legislation that affects school districts?
So I'll answer both of those, two.
It's a two-parter.
Yeah. So we, we were putting the pieces in place to be able to do that at the end of 2019 into 2020 for the spring 2020 legislative session. So COVID hit, and that fell apart, and so we weren't able to estimate what that was doing. We were in the process where we were reaching out to superintendents at that time and trying to put the administration piece together, and then we were going to reach out to the negotiating units to have educators and support personnel working as well. And I've spoken about, about that, it's our intention to get back to something like that. We got to be in the clear, we got to make sure. So we actually have been talking about doing something this fall after parents get back to school. I have talked, the dynamics in DeKalb County, I've talked to a couple additional of my peers, Toni McComby, who's, who's going to be representing north of Faceline Road, she's a, I predict she's going to be victorious in her election, but putting together some sort of DeKalb-centric entity like that with multiple legislators so that we've got that collective understanding from a group together. So yes, it's, it's my hope to do that. Your second question was when I reach out. So I have a list in my phone, my contacts in my phone have increased more than I ever thought I would have, I have a lot of friends now apparently. But I would reach out generally on district-wide issues to the superintendents that are in my district, and then on some of the more teacher-educated ones, I would reach out to some of the representatives in the negotiating groups or IEA, IFT, and see what the feeling was there.
Another question?
So let me give you a smile. And here's, here's what I want you to remember. Go ahead. I'll finish it, I'll wrap.
I'm going to build off, I'm going to build off Jim's a little bit. You know, we're volunteers, we're elected, we're volunteers, and we have a number of education pieces that we get to do on a regular basis, not opposed to that. Support education is why I serve on board. What do you do about people that serve in your role, your peers, that are not educated on anything that they're trying to push through? And my example is, I just served on statewide commission for the Inclusive American History at the request of Tom Bertrand. And LeShawn Ford's on that.
Yeah.
He was at half the meetings.
Yep.
I was at every one. They were all virtual. And then your Senate Majority Leader also served on that committee. And at the very beginning of that, Donna Lee from ISBE did a great job leading it, and right out of the box, Majority Leader from the Senate, did not understand how the state even functions. She's like, well, this is what we want, we want to put together these guidelines, and then we're going to mandate that curriculum. Mandate that curriculum. Now, in Chicago, if you want to mandate to CPS, you go and mandate CPS. But everybody is different. She did not understand that curriculums are standard-based. This is not a you get to mandate what everybody teaches, and this is exactly what they have to teach. How do you, how do you go about in your process educating your peers to understand what they're asking for and what they can't ask for in, within the framework of their own state that they're supposed to be representing?
Yeah. If you have a better answer, let me know, but it's a tough one, right? It really is.
Good, I had a tough one.
Yeah, no, tough one to solve, easy one to tell you, heck of I know. Because I'm an expert in insurance, right? I mean, I don't know cars, I don't know school, I went for 12 years, right? And then I, I got a college degree, so I guess I'm an expert, 12 years, right? I'm not. And, and the consequences of what we pass frequently, the, the issues that arise come out of thoughtful dialogue that happen generally in committee hearings, right? So the path of a bill is generally, somebody comes to me with a concern, and I pass constituent ideas, I've passed two of them significantly that I can think of right now. They come to me with an idea, we put it into a bill format of solving that problem, and then we shop it around to some of the constituent groups that would be impacted by that, right? And then what do we do? We, we wind up amending it because we didn't realize, right, that this was going to happen if we actually did what we sought to do. So that comes through shopping it around to the constituent groups. It also comes out when we sit in a room like this and we actually have a live committee meeting instead of a Zoom meeting, right? The Senate resumed in-person meetings, and they had thoughtful dialogue on a lot of the bills, the House continued to do it virtually, and we shot things out one after another. We had a refrain on the House floor that my peers on the other side repeated time and again, when we brought up legal issues of why their bill cannot be implemented or passed. And the response that we got, time and again, we will fix it in the Senate. It wasn't, thank you for pointing that out, let's make a better product, it was, we're going to fix it in the Senate, which tells to me, we're going to pass this no matter what. We've got a supermajority, we're going to impose our will, we're going to get this done right now, we're going to pass it in the Senate. So it would get over to the Senate, and frequently the Senate wouldn't fix it. And they'd just pass it, there was no accountability. So I go back to, and I'm not praising Michael Madigan, please don't hear me saying that, but under Michael Madigan, if you were getting run over the coals, there was a rule that allowed him to drag you over the coals for this duration of time and in this manner. And he could point to the rule to tell you exactly what to do. Right now, in the General Assembly, process and protocol is broken. Things are flying through over the course of the last two years with the advent of COVID that should never become law. They should never become law in their original form, and they are such generally bad ideas that they should never make the light of day. But frequently, we see that stuff passing because there is no accountability, there's no checks and balances, there's no ability to have a representative standing in front of you like a thesis and defending what they're trying to do and what their rules are, and the Chair of the Committee sitting there saying, like Larry Walsh, great guy, Democrat from the southwest side, he will push, or very south side of Chicago, he will push back and he will say, this isn't leaving the committee until you fix this, that and the other. Well, right now, we have committee members that are inexperienced and haven't done that, and they want to make friends with everybody so their own bills get out, and we don't have the accountability and the process and the protocol in place that unfortunately we saw under Mike Madigan. So we've got leadership issues, we've got quality issues, but at its core, we have process and policy issues where ideas aren't being properly vetted in the way that the Illinois taxpayer and Constitution envision that we do. And I go back to, we are still today living under Governor Pritzker's emergency rule protocols. In today's day and age, the Illinois Legislature has not weighed in on a single item on his ability to do that nor what the rules say. I am not suggesting that his rules weren't appropriate at some point in time and that they didn't need to be put into place. They could have, they very well did in some circumstances need to be there. But over two years under emergency circumstances, without the legislature picking up their constitutional mandated required authority and weighing in on this and codifying it in law, it's incredulous, it's neglect, it is, it is professional neglect in my opinion.
That's what I suspected, and I think it's the answer to the question why.
Wow, you know how to get it riled up, don't you?
Yeah, that's why people leave the state, that's why my kids won't come back.
And we hear that time and again from parents, we do. Illinois is still a great place, we are, we are on the cusp of doing some amazing things. If we can get our fiscal house in order, if we can restore balance so that dialogue, and I'm not saying that we need to prevail on any issue, I am not suggesting that. I am suggesting we have a better product in place through policies that are already approved and out there. And when we do that, Illinois is on the cusp of doing some amazing things. We look at, Facebook has come, right? Facebook is bringing a billion-dollar investment to this county. Are you aware that there is $11 billion worth of data centers in the pipeline ready to come into Illinois and be built? There are plans now. Imagine what that will do for those other local school districts and taxing bodies. It is a low-impact, high-revenue development that will be transformational for those communities that locate a data center. We need to grow our way out of this, and the only way we do it is by getting adults on the table. Whew. Hope you all at home are having fun. So here's what I would leave, unless anybody, any additional questions?
Well, just another one that was on my list.
Got it, go.
And that is, I, you know, I know that there's, there's been a lot touted about the new funding formula. But every year, it seems that our percentage of funds from the state as it relates to our budget goes down.
Yep.
And I know initially we had great hopes, we were, we were classified into different classification, and we thought we were going to get the money that we really deserve. But I think that at the very last minute, we, we were told, oh, no, you missed it by a couple of points.
Right.
So I don't know how they determine that, and I don't know how the funding formula actually works. I mean, I know the components that they say they put into it, but I never see the mathematics behind those components. And I, I just wonder if we could have some more transparency at least on those issues. I would certainly like more money, but at the very least, tell me how you're making these calculations. It's kind of like voodoo behind the scenes, you know? I'd like to see where you came up with this number for me exactly.
It wasn't me, let's declare, it wasn't me.
No, 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 but you, but you, you have some influence there.
It is. So my predecessor was one of the core members of negotiating that formula and making sure we got it. So the first thing that I would point to is, it is, it is not a perfect solution, but it is a solution that gets us towards perfect, right? And so right now, as it, as it functions, it's not going to go anywhere until we have a restored balance to how power works in the state of Illinois, right? The folks on the other side are going to decide, and none of them are eager to diminish any of the suburban or urban allocations that they have. And I think everybody is aware of Chicago having the falsely inflated student population number so that they will continue to get. It's, it's criminal, it is literally criminal, and it is, it is something that every parent should be upset about and demanding that we have better equity with, but we continue to see no attention given. I do like that we have continued to allocate resources towards increasing the amount of money that's going into the funding formula, and I will push towards that. But as far as fixes, there is a long line that many of my peers have said that they want a fix in that. So until there's a grand bargain of how this actually looks, I don't anticipate anything soon. It's a very complicated piece.
Now, we see a lot of other districts who, who get that money, and, and yet we're always constantly scraping, we're scraping by to get by, always. And of course, the burden then becomes unwieldy for our, our residents, because really what the legislature does by not funding education is put that on the backs of taxpayers, property taxpayers.
And we have walked away from that as a state, we have walked away from that.
Yeah, I think consciously, I think that was a, you know, a move that the state made consciously, I don't think that just happened.
We, we went from, and again, I'm going to give the percentage, somewhere near 50% funding at the beginning of this century to now, I think we're at 27, 28% of what the budget funding is for, for schools. So we haven't lived up to our partner, we haven't lived up to our expectations, and we need to do a better job of looking at that. And I just had somebody talk to me, well, wasn't the lottery supposed to solve that school funding? Listen, the lottery, that $600 million a year, that's a drop in the bucket, it's a lot of money, but it's a drop in the bucket when you look at what the overall.
But that was, that was bait and switch.
Completely, it moved the dollars on.
Yeah, yeah, well, we'll put that into the general, we'll take the money back from the budget that we had, we'll put the lottery money in there, and then we'll, the money that we take out of the budget will put back into their whole fund.
And if we had the ability to have fewer mandates on local units and allowed you more creativity, imagine what you could do with that, right? And it's just that.
I know in my heart of hearts, I know what we can do, I do.
It's the percentage or two difference that you can do, that educators can do in their classroom that could be change makers for generations of kids that you can't do because there's some onerous state rule that stands in the way of doing that. And our goal should be continuing to break, break those down and get them away. So I'll close with this, unless anybody has any additional questions.
Again, I'd just say I'd be remiss in not echoing that sentiment. I know you and I talked, you know, around the time of the Estor Fund allocations as we looked at, you know, why was Sycamore getting the state statistic?
In the spreadsheet.
By any metric that you could come up with on state-available data, Sycamore came out the worst in the entire county. I mean, DeKalb got three and a half times, three and a half dollars for every dollar that, you know, that we got, and it's great that these billion-dollar data centers are coming to DeKalb County, but unfortunately, they're in DeKalb proper, which means none of that tax revenue is going to help Sycamore schools, where very likely at least a quarter or half of those employees may end up locating.
Right.
So we'll be able to keep taxing the heck out of property, but it doesn't help us, you know, with the 50 million in, in school projects, you know, repairs that we need to keep these buildings running for another, you know, 40, 50 years. So I would appreciate, yeah, any, any help in bringing, just making them accountable for whatever formulas they're coming up with, because that should be public data, it should be, here's, here's the simple formula that you and anybody else in the, in the state of Illinois can use to verify that we are allocating dollars in, in the way that we say we, we are, I would rate.
And Board of Higher Ed gave us what they gave us, and that was it, you know? And, and so that was the other thing that I saw through this pandemic that I was most disappointed in. Everybody had to adapt, right? Educators more than, than most, police, law enforcement, nurses, everybody had to change the way they were doing things. But it just, the supportive nature of what the state government should have been doing, whether we're talking Secretary of State's, Board of Higher Ed, we're talking Health Department, we're talking state police functions, we're talking housing functions, we're talking awarding grants for housing and for commercial developments, and especially the unemployment was a big deal, and the DCFS debacles. We neglected the steer, the steering wheel, and we continue, the administration continues to have very low accountability for what their administrative departments do. And I don't know if it's just exhaustion or what, but we need to demand better accountability, and it's something that my side of the aisle has been demanding for the past three and a half years really, that we continue to be told that we're just standing in the way. How are we standing in the way? We're the super minority, we can't, we can't do anything, we don't control a single executive office. Literally, we have no bearing on the direction of where things are going right now. And as we try to point out these issues and, and the fiduciary duty that I would argue the state units of administration have to the taxpayer and the resident of the state of Illinois, should be held accountable. Everybody should remember the frustrations that they dealt with. And not that there wasn't a backup, and you shouldn't expect a backup, but the method, manner, and response, and ownership of what needed to be changed, it just was not there, and it shouldn't. So with that being said, I want you all to remember, there are a lot of frustrations, Illinois is worth fighting for. The reason I do it is Illinois is on the cusp of doing some amazing things, and we can get back to that. There is never in the history of humanity on this planet, there has never been a better time, a more fortunate time for us to walk this planet than right now. Regardless of individual circumstances that may be different, this is the best time to be alive in human history. We need to remember that, we need to wake up and embrace that, and we have to recognize that our onus is to make it better for those coming behind us, and I think that's what we see you guys doing each and every day through your work. So thank you for having me, it's been a pleasure. If I could be helpful, please reach out, let me know.
Thanks, Jeff.
Yep. Thank you.
I'm done, yeah, after all that.
Great presentation.
Next is Assistant Superintendent for HR.
Thanks, Jim. No offense to Jeff, but I promise this is going to be much more positive. So today we have Dr. Webster here with our instructional coaches to talk about the amazing work they've done this year. So we have Jim McCormick and Lisa Winters from the elementary, Beth Bitzenreiter from the middle school, and Phoebe Valentine from the high school. Present.
It's strange to have a podium, but Mr. Bitzenreiter.
Jim did that for us.
Just for you, Lisa, oh, Jenna, right?
I know.
Did you see it?
Look at that.
So we were here about three years ago, when the world was still spinning out its formal efforts, when the coaching had just started, and Lisa and Jen gave an overview of kind of what they had done their first year. I am incredibly grateful for everything all four of the coaches have done over the last couple of years during a very, very difficult time. If there was any question about the importance of instructional coaching, I think they've been put to rest. The amazing work these four coaches have done for our teachers, and I heard Representative Kiker talking about altering the generations to come, I really strongly believe that instructional coaching has the ability to do that because of the work they do with teachers. So I am going to get out of the way, and I'm going to let our four coaches bring you up to date on where we're at with coaching. to date on where we're at with coaching and has evolved significantly since the last time they spoke with you. And I'm very excited for them to be able to share the absolutely truly amazing things they've done. I think anybody on ed teams here can say that when we talk about things that are working well in the district, ed team meetings, they're already adding. Almost always, it comes back to the work that the coaches are doing and the impact that they're having. So, come on up.
Well, thank you for having us back. So the last time we talked to you, things were going really on a, on a pretty nice trajectory and then things stopped. So, but that really, they didn't really stop. They just changed. They pivoted. I'd like to kind of just highlight this quote, that coaching is the universal language of change and learning. If you think back to any of your personal experiences where you gained a high level of success, there was probably somebody coaching you. A parent, a sports coach, a teacher, a counselor, somebody was probably kind of giving you that guide on the side, kind of help. And that's really what our goal is, to create those kinds of changes by being guides with our colleagues. So going back to pretty much a couple of months after we talked to you three years ago, our job pivoted in some pretty big ways. We started to facilitate the choice boards for the elementary school. Who knew? We became really knowledgeable about our curriculum materials faster than we had anticipated. That was one of our initial charges from Chris. And it was, it was, we were working on it, but we had a lot more time to really dig in, which was lucky because then our colleagues utilized us to help map out our units of study in math and language arts a little more tightly, especially since we had teachers trying to get through more material and in online learning platforms. So our mapping out of the units has proved to be a really helpful piece for our team leaders and their PLCs. Thank goodness. And we did that with our teammates. We didn't do that alone in isolation. Also, we were lucky enough to help kick off virtual learning at the elementary schools with some online kind of trainings. But, and I think all four of us know this pretty deeply, then the teachers really took off. You know, we got, we just, we kind of got the ball rolling with them and gave them some confidence and then they really skyrocketed. We're also very excited that this year, in the third year of, of having coaches in our district, middle school and high school coaches were added, one at each level. And those are really cool, cool addition. And even better, Beth, our middle school coach, will be full-time coaching next year. So that will give her more availability for teachers and for projects that they need and that they want to work on. And then I really want to say that through this journey, if you're, if you're in this kind of a position, and some of you in your jobs might feel, feel this kind of pull, one of our, our important tasks is one, that we really know teaching and learning, right? That we really know about, about learners and teachers and kids. But the other part is that we need to hone our craft as, as a coach, you know, so that you're not an advice monster, that you're a good listener. And we really have been thankful that the opportunities that Dr. Webster has put forth for us to be able to build our capacity to do this job. So we really wanted to actually say thank you for that. That was a really, it made it so that we could work with our colleagues that are really highly qualified teachers in our district and we could, we could honor them and work with their specific needs, which is a gift. It's a gift that we've had to be able to do this. So we told Steve this was an easy program to drive. Every time a new person gets up, he changes slides and we're moving on. So thank you again for having us here to tell you all about this.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Winters and I'm the kindergarten through fifth grade math instructional coach. And along with Jen, I work in all five of our elementary buildings. And what we really wanted to do is to share with you some of the basic tenets of our work and certainly communication and the way in which we communicate with classroom teachers is a tremendous priority. And there are a variety of ways in which that happens in our role, but really wanted to begin first with our goal, to be able to build bridges and trust through a variety of communication avenues. And this certainly isn't all of what we do in the area of communication, but these are some of the, some of our more important ways in which we reach classroom teachers. We, was not our intent that we open up all of the links that are provided, but for all of you, to be able to have access to some of our work. We wanted to share with you our monthly newsletters that are disseminated in both math and English language arts at the elementary level and then Beth at the middle school level sampling up her newsletter, as well as Phoebe's work at the high school. And really what I can say about those newsletters is that they're one way in which we work to be really responsive to the specific needs of teachers. In addition to that, we have webpages, both in English language arts and in the area of elementary math. And if you had an opportunity to look at those webpages at the elementary level, you'll also notice that there's quite a few instructional videos. And those instructional videos too are another example of really being responsive to teachers and what teachers are asking for. In addition to that, at the high school level, the Spartan screenshot is an example of a webpage that's specific to technology and some of the awesome work that Phoebe's doing at the high school level. We also, in terms of meeting with classroom teachers, for Jen and me being in all five of the elementary buildings, it is our weekly goal that we are in each of those five elementary buildings and that teachers can come to expect that although there's just one of us in each of those areas, that we are highly visible and available to them. And certainly at the middle school and high school level, being able to design a weekly schedule wherein which both Beth and Phoebe are highly visible as well is a priority. If I had to think of a silver lining of COVID, virtual meetings would definitely be one of those. It's hard for me to imagine my work now without virtual meetings. Probably one of the best examples that I can highlight that happened fairly recently was a classroom teacher that had worked, had reached out regarding the struggle she was having with a specific math lesson. And I was able to put together a screencast of my video in response to her questions and to just demonstrate virtually how I would approach that particular lesson. Never before would I have ever been able to do something like that. So, and the idea of virtual meetings just being so much more, you know, making ourselves so much more valuable, available to classroom teachers in their schedules, you know, so that they don't have to come to us or we don't always need to come to them at a moment's notice that we can set up those options as well, has been really helpful. You all know that professional learning communities, I know there have been a variety of presentations at board meetings about the professional learning community work that's happening within our district, kindergarten through 12th grade, actually early childhood as well. And we, both Jen and I worked together with Molly Tucker, our MTSS coordinator, and designed this learning by doing professional work intended for our team leaders at the elementary level. And this was really to provide them with some additional support and guidance in the area of professional learning communities. And we had already been doing a lot of really good work around that, but really wanted to hone in and sort of solidify our work and really do whatever we could to improve our efforts in that area. And this work continues to be ongoing, so next year it will also be a part of our initiative as well. And so I just linked there the document that we use for planning purposes. Faculty meeting presentations. I know that both Beth and Phoebe have actually gone into their faculty meetings and have presented specifically on what it is they can offer as coaches at both the middle school and the high school level so that their teachers know and have available some real specifics about their offerings. For both Jen and me, we were able to go into all faculty meetings this year as a result of some of the, the information that we gathered from our math testing to really share district-wide. When I think about that word bridge, this would be an example of building bridges and sharing in every elementary building, some of the really successful instructional strategies that we became aware of in our work, that we wanted to celebrate within each and every elementary building. New teacher check-ins. I know that Nick supported us in a lot of this effort and so I'm sharing with you a checklist that we shared with all of our new hires and really doing whatever we could to support those teachers that we welcome into our district in the very best way that we possibly can. And so this checklist highlighted some of the conversations that we had with all of our new hires this year. And we really look forward to continue to grow those efforts as well in the future. I know that Phoebe's going to talk about some of our future goals. And then finally, just building successful teaching practice bridges. I referenced this previously, but the instructional videos that we have made available. In my math world, I was actually able to go into some faculty meetings and do a demonstration around math number talks with our Oscar students and then put together some instructional videos that would be supportive of teachers if ever they wanted to go back and revisit some of those lessons. I know that both Beth and Phoebe and Jen as well have done some of that work. So at this point, I want to turn it over to Beth, our full-time middle school instructional coach, who's going to talk a little bit more about professional development.
Hi, Beth Bitzenreiter, the instructional coach focused on technology this year here at the middle school. So I'm going to talk just a little bit about professional development and that's definitely been one of our main areas of focus as an instructional coach. So really our goal is to be able to offer job embedded professional development for our teachers that is timely and relevant to those teachers' needs. So we are really pleased to report that this year we offered 72 professional development events to our staff, which is incredible. So we're pretty proud of that.
We were shocked.
Yeah. So not only is this a great opportunity for teachers to continue to grow and learn professionally, but another opportunity for teachers to accumulate the professional development hours that they need for relicensor. So that's built right here into our structure. So some of the events might be, for example, a lunch and learn, which is a half hour session over a teacher's lunch hour with, where they would earn half of a PD hour, to lengthy coaching cycles where some of our teachers earned 15, 15 PD hours through that event. So again, 72 events, but an incredible number of PD hours that our teachers were able to earn. So here I just wanted to kind of highlight a few different types of events that we were able to create and offer for our teachers. So one would be kind of a book study workshop approach. And so with this, these were ongoing multi-week events, which are really great to encourage professional conversation and dialogue for our teachers. And they are able to then go back to the classroom to implement some of the practices that they've learned about and then return back to the group for reflection and to really learn together. So one example would be the middle school and high school partnered this spring to a five-month workshop, so the entire spring semester, where we focused on teaching techniques. And we used a book called Teach Like a Champion 3.0, so the third iteration of the book. But it was a great opportunity to bring middle school and high school teachers together. And it was just great to be part of that professional dialogue and to have this sustained over such a long period of time. As was mentioned, our elementary coaches had a similar approach with a book study with Learning by Doing, focused on, again, the idea of professional learning communities. Another type of professional development would be other types of events that focus on more of a specific content area or a topic. So no matter what that approach was, our goal was to be able to again, be responsive to teacher needs and also to create opportunities for teacher choice in that topic, as well as maybe a time that fit best into their day. So one example would be our elementary coaches with their virtual teachers lounges. And so as Lisa explained, again, those virtual meetings have been a great asset to us all where teachers could meet before school, they could meet after school, even in the evening, if that is the time that fit best for them. We had a lunch and learn type of approach where teachers could opt into eating lunch with their colleagues and learning over their lunch hour. And then topics varied from technology to SEL, to poetry and mathematical practices. So really just being, trying to be responsive to what our teachers need. We've all spent a great deal of time working with teachers in small groups and also one-on-one. And again, these experiences we've had over the past two years with our virtual meetings, using screen capture apps, it's been really helpful to be able to meet with teachers whenever it fit best into their schedule, whether that was a quick virtual meeting or recording yourself presenting something and emailing it to a teacher. That's been really helpful to be so responsive and quick with that turnaround time. We've also been able to continue building a library of those asynchronous opportunities for, for teachers, kind of that anytime, anywhere professional development approach. So Phoebe, I think I'll talk a little bit more about that, but that is again, part of our, our future focus and, and goals that we have looking forward. Lastly, I wanted to highlight again, just the opportunity to individualize and customize the professional development for teachers. So one of the ways that we do that is through what's called a coaching cycle. And so a coaching cycle will allow a teacher to set a goal, to learn about an instructional practice or strategy to try to achieve that goal, to implement it and then reflect on that progress. And so the coach's role is to work alongside the teacher through observations, through data collection, through modeling and co-teaching, and then helping teachers with those reflective conversations. And so we've been able to work with individuals as well as small groups on a variety of goals, from classroom management to effective questioning techniques, student engagement, co-teaching with our special education staff, just to name a few of those topics. So I promised to be quick. We have a lot more, obviously 72 different events that happened, but I think this kind of encompasses three different types of professional development that we offered this year.
I'm Phoebe Valentine. I am the instructional technology coach at the high school, although next year I'm moving to admin as the director of instructional technology. So I'm going to talk a little bit about our future focus and what we'd like to bring next year. Our goal is empower teachers to improve student learning and wellbeing through research-based instructional practices and continuous professional growth. Basically, our goal is just like everyone's goal here, improve student learning, improve student wellbeing, and we want to offer some opportunities for teachers to improve in order to help that happen. One thing we want to focus on is growing what works. We want to expand and improve what's already working. Our coaching cycles are working very well. They do offer that individualized improvement opportunity for teachers. We can also focus on small groups or a specific curricular need and those show a lot of growth for our teachers. So that's something we want to continue to do even more of. We want to expand that anytime, anywhere learning. So those are some of our professional development opportunities that we might create in Canvas or in the past we've done it in Google Classroom as well, especially at the elementary level. But those are things that teachers can go back to at any point in time. They can work on it at 2:00 AM if that works for them, or they can do it, you know, over the summer. But those remain there so they continue to provide opportunities for teachers in the time that fits well for them. We'd like to continue to grow that program. Newsletters are something we started this year. We want to continue to do that next year, maybe be more collaborative even with that effort in order to kind of get a more common message across EC12. And lunch and learns, that's something I know in my role at the high school, I was able to offer because I was at one building and I was full-time. So I know that's something Beth being full-time next year would like to expand on more at the middle school level. Faculty meeting presentations, continuing to do more of that, potentially collaborating on our, again, getting a message kind of across to all of our teachers so we know they're all getting that information or those certain techniques. And then curricular enhancements, that's something that especially our elementary coaches have been working a lot on with our teachers, with their essentials, and we want to continue doing that next year. Mentoring is something we'd like to expand a little bit more. That's a great opportunity for us to provide additional support for our new teachers, helping them become accustomed to the district, helping with retention, getting everyone on the same page, but then also really pulling them into that continuous improvement mentality that we want them to have. If we can get them into instructional coaching right away, then it really sets them up to have this continual growth mindset for their entire career here. And then finally, especially with being able to have now all of our coaches be full-time, we feel like next year we want to improve on our collaboration. We want to have greater collaboration and alignment EC12, be able to kind of be working on some of the same big ideas, PLCs, social emotional learning, these type of things, be able to do them across the district. We want to combine our efforts for PD when we're talking. We want to combine our efforts for PD when we're talking about a specific topic. In order to have that shared understanding, we will hope to create some things that will work EC12, and then we can also offer maybe a secondary part of that that would be specific to our level or our content area. And then just overall, as a program, we want to have continued growth. We want to continue to evaluate our program, evaluate what we're offering, how we can improve it. And evolution, we want to keep evolving in order to improve the program and improve the coaching that we're offering to our teachers. So I don't think we have any more slides. I think if you have questions now, we'd be happy to answer your questions.
What do you think, what do each of you think your coaching program needs that you don't have now?
I think at the elementary, maybe more of us.
I was just going to say, I would say.
It might come many more of you.
Well, you know, we have had the opportunity to network with coaches in not only this county, but in DuPage County. And a lot of the teachers are responsible for one or two buildings. So then they're really able to dig in even deeper with their teachers, you know. So it gives them the opportunity to get in those rooms even more and even build those relationships even deeper with those teachers. I think we would miss some of the curricular work in that because Lisa and I'd love that too, but.
They're often surprised, you know, wow, you're in all five elementary buildings.
They do say that.
And I have to be really honest and say, I don't do it like you do it. You know, it would be impossible for us to. But to Jen's point, to have at least, you know, a minimum one per building. Just the relationship piece, Chris, is so unbelievably important, as you might imagine, for teachers to establish a level of trust in really inviting us into their classrooms, you know. That's a big part of what we have to place a priority on. And so to be able to be in a building on a much more regular basis than I'm able or that we're able would be awesome.
So that maybe goes to my next question because I think it's interesting there's only one at the high school and one at the middle school. For, so I think about all the different subjects that are taught. Mostly, I'm thinking high school and how one person can be a coach to all those subjects. So I think about this as well. When you talk about having one person in each of the schools at a minimum, I assume that you and Jen were kind of picked because math was near and dear to your heart, passionate about that subject.
She loves math.
Same for Jen. So then I think, well, if you just put one in each building, then how, then don't we lose out on that? We're not capitalizing on that person's passion or the things that they really are strong at. And instead, now we've just put this kind of, this is a great person to build a relationship with, which leads to my next question, which I'm a huge believer, so please don't read into this wrong, but at some point, don't you wish you could go, because of what I've done, look at this test score? And here, if you need, if you need more proof why we, we as a board should spend more money by putting an instructional coach in each school, here it is. Look what we have done, the two of us or the four of us. And so where I love the future focus stuff, I just wondered, do you ever sit in a meeting, you, the group of you, and go, okay, so how could we show real data that this is really working for our school district? And quite honestly, I think tonight, I feel like you haven't been around long enough when you factor in COVID and pandemic and you haven't had enough time to, to show that effect, I guess. But I think that's a big mess.
That's a big goal, too. It was, you know, you really hit the nail on the head. We were doing a lot of triage last year. And as we're, people in our role everywhere. And that is one of our goals, is to have data, not just maybe math data, but working, I worked in a cycle with a teacher this year where we did a pre-assessment and a post-assessment of a cold right. You know, like, how did that work that we did together? What did that, and that was also to show the teacher, look at what you accomplished. That's a really big, that's a really big thing that we need to do, too, is say, look what you accomplished in your classroom based on this partnership. You know, you were doing this now, you have this forever. And Lisa has a really great story, too, because we're starting that, Chris, but it's not so defined yet.
Right.
All the reasons.
Yum, right.
Just being in a third grade classroom for consecutive weeks, really, and then having Ryan Janisch say to me, I can't wait to see her test scores as a result of your, you know, the two of you working together. And once those test scores came out, they were, there was much to celebrate, you know. And so I know that she felt really good about it. I certainly felt good about it. And I felt it while we were in that classroom, working together. And we just did a ton of team teaching, co-teaching, learning together, and basing all of our work off of the feedback that we were getting from students. And so much in the way of moving above and beyond grade-level content because children were ready for it and we just kept taking them to the next level and to the next level and really being responsive to the needs of students in the same way that we as coaches work to be responsive to the needs of teachers, you know. And he said to me, too, gosh, wouldn't it be great if we had hundreds of you, you know, that really could make this kind of difference? I can say, though, that this school year has been such a celebration in terms of having these five math specialists that we were able to hire. And I've been able to work really closely with them, along with Molly Tucker, our MTSS coordinator. And we've been engaged in a year-long book study about eight effective teaching practices in the area of mathematics that they've been able to bring back into the classroom in their work with students and throughout our district at the elementary level. I know that classroom teachers would tell you that their efforts have been a tremendous success in working with students. So it's been really exciting for me to be able to work together with Molly and supporting them, knowing that they're going into the classrooms and working directly with students. You know, our role is intended more for teachers, certainly, but these specialists, their role is intended for students. And for the two of us to be able to do whatever we can to best support their efforts has certainly been rewarding.
Do you find, I know when you guys first came, after your first year, you talked about how some teachers were hesitant to buy into instructional coaching and maybe didn't feel that there was a need or felt, I don't know what the right word is, but guarded about asking for help that they didn't know how to teach something. Do you feel there's still a sense of that? Or do you feel like you've worked beyond that?
A little bit of that still. And I think the middle school and high school, we can talk to this, too. There's also, you've probably read everywhere that teaching has been a really hard job this year. People didn't think it was going to be as hard as it was going to be coming back from everything. I think everybody thought it's just going to be easy, breezy, more normal. And so I do think probably maybe less resistance to, to us and a little more resistance to the idea of, will this be more work for me? Because they're so tired this year. They're just so tired, you know. And, and so, but I, I do feel like we've had teachers that ask a lot more questions, a lot more easily now than we did last time we were here. And you two are like new in your roles. How did you feel?
Yeah, I feel like teachers definitely seemed open to it. I kind of had a specific plan in my mind of how I would get started. So that's why I did more of the lunch and learns to kind of bring the teachers in and then follow up with coaching cycles, reaching out to individual people. A lot of my coaching cycles were with some of the newer teachers and those mentoring checklists kind of led into that. So that, I think, worked really well and I hope we can continue with some of those things. I think if you have the right kind of starting point, it's like you're introducing them to a topic and then saying, what if we did a coaching cycle on this? But I do, toward the end of the year, as we continue presenting at these faculty meetings, this is what it is, this is what I can offer, reaching out to people, people start reaching out to you. Whereas in the beginning of the year, I was more reaching out to them. Toward the end of the year, people were really coming to me to work on it. So I feel like it, it went well and people were receptive and interested. I also kind of had some people who felt comfortable with it talk at a faculty meeting about their experience with it. I think Beth did the same thing and that was really effective in getting other people to want to do it because I think all of our teachers want to improve and sometimes they need that, to see that excitement from someone else and how it helped them, and that was effective for getting people coming to us.
I just want to be clear, too, that we learn so much from them. You know, I would never want there to be a message that we're all knowing because, oh my gosh, the amount that we're able to learn from their skill set.
Well, I suspect just your conversation.
Absolutely.
I mean, the same thing happens in my work when I'm able to talk to someone that does the same job with me and I go, oh, no kidding? You do it that way?
Yeah.
Well, that makes sense.
Absolutely.
Never have even thought of it before.
Yes. It really causes you to have a real open mind because although what you see in a classroom may not be the way in which you would approach that particular lesson, it's really eye-opening to learn from these wonderful, gifted teachers that we have in our district and allow you to shift your perspective a bit on how you might approach that in the future. And to really listen, you do so much listening. And really, like I know Jen referenced, like, you know, not, not being, what was the phrase that you used when you stood at the podium?
Of course, and say, advice monster, right?
Yeah, the advice monster, right? And just really listening to teachers and their perspectives. And I remember that when all of you, many of you, would come around to all of the elementary buildings prior to the start of the school year and how envious I was of that. And now we get to do that and to see firsthand in those initial days of school, all that goes into setting up a classroom and getting ready for the arrival of students and to see firsthand, really, the tremendous talent that we have in the school district. And what an awesome responsibility it is, really, to take an already talented group of individuals and move us together forward in a way that can even positively impact students to a greater degree. It's really a challenge. Beth, I think you have something you want to add also?
Oh, let's move on, but that's okay.
I want to make sure.
Beth did have, Beth did have a high, you know, she went from the high school to the middle school this year. So she not only was like building new relationships in a new job, so really, I think, had a really tough, not tough, but just a lot of new challenges that way.
Yeah, just like Jen or Lisa have mentioned, the idea of building trust and establishing that relationship was, is really important. And so part of our first semester here, in terms of instructional coaching, was really thinking about what the middle school's goals were and how do we use instructional coaching to help fulfill those and getting to know our teaching staff, too. And so I worked with Jim and Sarah to kind of go through that and develop a vision for coaching. And then in January, with kind of our unveiling of instructional coaching at the middle school and was able to work with quite a few teachers, honestly. I know it's, we start small and it's to be expected that teachers can be a little hesitant, reserved. But aside from one, every teacher that I worked with was a veteran teacher, which I think really says a lot about our staff wanting to improve and taking a risk of having somebody new come into their classroom and work with them. And I know that, you know, we've talked about that being maybe a little bit of a difference between elementary and middle school, high school, where you've got a lot of people in and out of your room. In the middle school and high school, we just don't have that. You're kind of in your room, you're by yourself, and so having somebody come into your room makes people feel really vulnerable, right? And so putting themselves out there with that desire to improve, I think, says a lot. And as Phoebe mentioned, just having our staff at faculty meetings share their experience with coaching and other staff members are hearing from veteran teachers about what it was like, ways that they saw success. A number of teachers really appreciated data from observations and were able to use it with parents. You know, like, this person was in my room, your student was on task X percented, you know, X amount of time, or they were only engaged for this amount of time. So, you know, there is some really helpful information that they're able to gain through that as well. So I'm hopeful that at the middle school, we'll be able to launch the school year in an energized way after the summer and more of an understanding of what coaching is and ways that it can help support the teachers.
So I just, quick question slash comment. So I guess, just from my standpoint, I think there's plenty of secondary data that would point to instructional coaches being very effective. In my work, I've seen it happen and I definitely, so there's no argument there. What Chris asked about measuring performance, I think, is a really good question. And when I think about that and I think about like how you would make a decision, how do you evaluate the efficacy of something? Like when we know secondary data exists a point that it's effective, but how is it being effective here? To me, I think for this, it's adoption of what you guys are doing. So how many teachers are using instructional coaches? How many, like when you point into like 72 opportunities, one thing that I think is really interesting is like the lunch and learns. I think that's a great idea. And so like to me, that is really exciting that that's even available because think about the compliment to, you know, your food and learning, it's just, it's not taking time out of the day. So it just makes sense that that would overlap. So to me, like, when I'm thinking about what, how effective is it? When you tell me things like, when you say things like, oh, it's being adopted by this many teachers or it's being adopted, there's 72 PD opportunities, or there's 15, you know, professional development or continuing education credits that were earned, that seems like it's being, it is effective. I would like to know, I would be interested in knowing, just from a teaching standpoint, how many teachers, like percentage-wise, have reached out to an instructional coach, are using them? What's that demographic data look like? Is it older teachers? Is it younger teachers? I'm sure it's there. I don't know that, and I'm sure that a large part of like what you guys are doing every day is trying to get, again, more and more of these people through like these future-focused items, like the newsletters, anywhere learning, the coaching cycle. So like, to me, that's everything. The peer-to-peer exchange piece, like we talk about innovation in the district, like where is that innovation going to come from? And aside from just saying the word innovation, I think having that interchange, having that lunch and learn, having that PD time built in where it's convenient, that is where I think the innovation is going to come from. That's where I think those like, those new age learning techniques are going to come through. And I think you guys have a really great opportunity to be the catalysts for that. So that's exciting. I guess my question then, building that really large level of context, is do you see a growing level of adoption from teachers and where do you see the most resistance?
I think, just speaking for me at the high school, the biggest resistance was the amount of time I have in a day. So I guess that speaks to Chris's point from earlier. It's, I feel like it's being used really effectively. So I know, like, for me, I cut back on lunch and learns the second semester to be able to do more coaching. And I think that's kind of the goal. I mean, we start some of these pieces so that we can adjust. We talked in our instructional coach training about having like a pie and our day is a pie chart and what percentages, what pieces of the pie are you putting towards certain things? So I think you want to offer broad opportunities, but then you can kind of adjust, just like the conversations we had about budgeting earlier. You know, you adjust the pie to have the biggest impact. And so that's conversations we continue to have. But as far as, I didn't run into, I didn't encounter a large amount of resistance just because we have so much time, so we're providing the best opportunities we can with that time.
Are there teachers not adopting, you know, this type of coaching? And if so, are they, are you noticing some level of, like, is there a continuity between that? Is there a certain segment? Like, is it, is there a particular group? And is it, like, if there was a lunch and learn, is it they don't want to eat into instructional time? Like, I guess that's where I'm trying to figure out who, who's being underserved voluntarily.
And I think that'll be important data for, and we have the data because we sent out the surveys. So we know exactly what teachers have done what and we could get all that demographic information. But to Chris's point and your point, it's still a little bit early yet. I mean, we can definitely get those trends, but it's been a weird couple of years. We had started when we first came and spoke to you, that first year, we had done all that. We had all that information for you in that first year, or kind of our flagship year. And it just was not feasible or possible to do for the last two years. And I will tell you, this year felt harder than the previous two. This year is the hardest year pandemic-wise, I think, in schools. But your question about the kind of the resistors, one of the things that, from a broader perspective at K-12 that I've watched happen is that as the kind of the early adopters of something, in this instance, coaching, kind of start buying into it and then people start to see, like, all of the things that the coaches are doing and the different ways they can help them and that it actually makes their job easier and not harder. And it excites them. At this point, I can, I only have anecdotal, but I could, I could.
And that was like literally it that I was thinking.
Yep. So I will tell you that there has been a significant increase in when I try, when I see with how they're spending their days. We have spreadsheets that we keep track of how they're spending their days and the amount of time that that used to be and kind of selling themselves their work, right?
and kind of selling themselves their work, right? About there, like with the the sandwich sign, trying to sell their, to sell their, you know, their wares, is now the opposite. Now it's like, how do we find enough time in the day for them to be and do all the things that they need to be and do? Which is why that virtual piece blended with the in-person piece has been so important because it's easier for us to do. So I think from Nick's office, he could also attest to the expand, expanding number of professional development offerings that we've had. You know, Kelly has been the one that has been creating all the evidence of completion forms. And she can tell you that all those offerings are very well attended, that lots of people are getting lots of professional development hours. And the really exciting thing is that we have that completed, but we also have the anytime, anywhere learning that we've been working on. So I had a teacher that actually reached out to me today because we're getting towards the end of the year and they're looking for their licensure hours, right? And she was asking me about a professional development opportunity. And so we had a back and forth conversation. She said, "Oh, that's okay. I'll just go to the learning and teaching site to all the PD offerings that that they've created for the year. I'll just, I'll just do some professional learning there. I'll get the hours I need from the learning and teaching site for the things that the coaches have created or the IAA website or different places." And that was monumental, really, because that's how far it spread that they knew that we have coaches that are there for in-person learning, they're there for virtual learning, that they they have things during lunch, they have things at night. We have, we're starting to build a library of anytime, anywhere learning for teachers, like we're trying to do for teacher, for for kids. And she was a specialist teacher. So it was even more exciting that it was a specialist teacher because there's been a lot of frustration in the past about there being professional development for those very kind of niche fields like art, music, PE. And this happened to be someone from one of those areas. Because it's about pedagogy, it's about good teaching. And good teaching is good teaching, whether you're teaching math or music or art or reading. So it isn't, it applies to everybody. It's strategies that people can use to be a better teacher regardless of the content they're teaching. So kind of to your point with, I I wanted to kind of go back to that when you said, "Well, we need one for science, for social studies, for math." There are models, there are coaching models that have one, like we do, right, for content areas. But the biggest, there's also the model of just instructional practice. And there are certain things with instructional practice, which is why it's so important to have the K-12 group together, is that it doesn't matter if you teach kindergarten or you teach seniors. There are just certain things that that's good teaching, right? And so there is something to be said for having those content areas specialists for sure. But there's also just that that instructional approach, like, this is just what the teachers do and this is how we support them, right? So whether it's through technology or whether it's through math or ELA, the conversations we have as a group are not really super specific to the content areas. They're about how you have conversations with kids, how do you work with spoke groups, how do you extend, how do you scaffold? What kind of conversations do you have, right? And so I think by, when you talk one per building, I would love to see one in a content area. I'd love to see them that many at the elementary and I'd love to see that many at the middle, middle school and the high school. I know realistically, as we talk about budget, that's kind of a lofty goal. But I do think, I can honestly say, as I reflect on my ten, my previous, my last 10 years here, that the most, one of the most impactful things that I have had the privilege to be a part of and to help grow this instructional coaching program here. Because to your point, it takes, we have all these conversations about all these big plans and aspirations and things that we want to do. But if you don't have somebody that can actually have you boots on the ground in there helping teachers, not at a one, not at a one-day workshop, not with a consultant coming in, those things are important, but you need embedded people that are in there every single day providing that authentic professional development. That's how you innovate. That's how you improve test scores. That's how you make kids want to come back to school the next day because their teachers are supported and have this, the structure and the, and the, and the strategies that they need to be successful to stay on top of things. So I really, I cannot say enough about the work that these coaches have done and how incredibly grateful and proud I have been to work alongside them and to help grow that. And as I pass the torch to Mike, I hope, my sincere hope is that this this particular program continues to grow because I think it is one of the absolutely most impactful thing we can do to improve the experiences for our students is by supporting our teachers.
So Chris, I've often referred to your, our meeting at the History Center before COVID when you made this just jaw-dropping suggestion that our test scores were going to improve by so much because of.
Yes.
It still makes me go.
I still have goals. I have goals. I'm here to see if he knows what they are. I have those goals. So we came really close this year.
Well, it would be good to see that empirical data. I mean, that's the, you know, this, this is all well and good, and I think everybody supports the concept. But but where's the data? Where's the empirical data that 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 supports?
Well, and it's really hard, like, I absolutely am with you that I want to see our students' test scores go up, and they did. They did this year, so whoever gets to present that happy information to you is going to have a good presentation day because our scores did go up on MAP. I'm still waiting for SAT. I imagine that's the case too. But it's really hard, Jen, to isolate what particular thing, like correlational data, like this caused this. The causal data, like A caused B, is really hard to prove because there's so many things that we have done. If we had only done one thing this year and all it was was instructional coaching, then we could absolutely definitively say instructional coaching caused this.
Couldn't we do case studies that would show that though?
It's almost like Lisa was talking about.
Exactly what, right.
Right, no.
You know, where you're working with this particular teacher and you see, you see the scores go up in that, in that case.
But I will tell you.
So it would be good to have, you know, something like that.
But I will tell you that in the very, very, very preliminary data that I've had a chance to look at, our MAP window is closed on Friday, so I don't have specific data to share with you, that in the areas that coaches worked, the grade levels that the coaches worked really closely with the teachers, there was exponential growth in some of those grade levels. Can I say 100% that it was because of the coaches? No, but I'm, I'm going to go out there and say that that direct work with the coach and the focus that was there definitely had an impact on closing some of the pretty large gaps that we had at the beginning of this year very, very significantly by the end of this year. So.
So I would ask whoever gets to present that great data, that perhaps they would work with these coaches to bring a few examples of how their work has really impacted that particular classroom, perhaps not district-wide, because maybe that's asking too much at this point, but that there was real growth here and our coaches spent lots of time in this classroom. And I don't want to, I don't mean to say I want to see what teacher it is anonymously.
Right.
But that somehow we can start to relate that this great work that they're doing is, in fact, really making a difference.
And when we have the opportunity to look at the data more closely, like I said, it just, today's Tuesday, just closed Friday. So to have the opportunity to do that deep dive. But when that deep dive happens, I would imagine that that could be, there's going to be evidence of that. I have no doubt that there's going to be evidence. I also can tell you that if you wanted more details about how many teachers, how many hours, we could get that to you as well because we have it and that would be helpful. And we could compare that probably to the data we had that first year and compare it to the third year, if that would be helpful. And we do, I mean, because we do keep records. It's a little different, like, I really can't give you, like, the, when we were hardcore in the pandemic, when we were remote and or hybrid, it's a little trickier. But it might even be a, a good goal to set for next year when we're normal, close to it, whatever the new normal is, when we're in school all the time and kids are here and teachers are here and everybody's helping. That would be a good focus for you to share, or, you know, that maybe Nick could follow up on as the Assistant Superintendent for Educational Program. Maybe that's something he and Mike could work on for next year with the coaches.
That'd be great.
So this is less of a question, more of a challenge, kind of wrapping a few of these points all together for me is, and you stole a little bit of my thunder, I, I see this, I have no doubt that the data is there and I want to see it just like everybody else. But I see this as one of our, as you kind of mentioned, one of our biggest areas for impactful innovation because innovation isn't just technology.
Right.
So that's the way I saw it from the first time you presented it. And one of our goals that we're at least talking about and adopted yet is, and I, and test scores are great. I know we have to have test scores, or at least to some level. But one of the goals is to find alternative ways of gauging growth that aren't test scores.
I agree with you.
That are something outside the box, and I know I use that all the time. But I would challenge this group to work with administration, administration to include them if we adopt this goal, to provide insight into ways of looking at alternative ways to gauge student growth and engagement beyond test scores.
And I would agree with you.
That's one of the goals, and I think that's one way to innovate too, because you, you're boots on the ground. You're in there with the teachers, you're only, you're getting the feedback from the teachers. You're getting, you're getting insight into what's working and not working. And there's got to be a way to to pull that together to create some ways that are, again, not just test scores, to gauge engagement, growth, movement along that way. And as far as pulling the data together, Mr. Keiger mentioned that Facebook's going to be here. They're a company that's pretty good with algorithms. I would think we could find someone there that might want to help us put an algorithm together to pull all these, like you said, multiple points of data together to give us something useful. So that's, that's where I would, I, I, I want to, I want to make sure this group's included as part of that, assuming we adopt that goal, to look at something, again, that's a little bit out or away from the box on how we gauge student growth. It's not just about test scores. My son did great on test scores, but, you know, he struggles in other things. So how does, how does, how does that work?
And it is really hard to to say what exactly, and I'm not, I mean, I wish I could tell you this is the, this is the silver bullet that's, that's increasing test scores, because if I had it, we would have test scores. It's just such a multifaceted thing, that there's not any one thing that's necessarily going to be able to move the needle completely. There are things that will move the needle further in conjunction with other things. But if, if there was just one thing that could do it, we would have found it already, right? It's got to be, it's got to be a combination of things that come together. But I know that the elementary and coaches and I meet every week, the four of us meet once a month. To have those kind of conversations, like, what's happening in the buildings, right? What, 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 what are you seeing that teachers need? What are people asking you? And I can tell you the number of times that we have done things from those conversations, created ideas and things like the PLC book study. Like, hey, we really feel like, and like the kind of the lunch and learns that you have had and the things that you have had have come from, this is what I'm hearing from teachers and that they need, right? Because they do, they're in, these four experts are in the buildings, working with and talking to teachers.
You know, Chris, an excellent example of that that happened this year was we had one school write a grant for take-home decorable books. So just things that if they don't come back, we're good with, you know, they're like black and white, they're decorable for their early readers, a K-1 grant. And instead, Chris suggested that we don't send that grant through to SEF because if one school with little people needs that, probably all five of our schools need that. So that, that would not have happened in that way if we weren't working in tandem. And so what really happened because of that was Chris was able to identify what could have been a little bit of maybe systemic injustice on accident, you know, because kids at one school would all get this, but these other ones wouldn't. And, and it's not through any fault of their own. And, and so like things like that, that those, those communications, that's like a small thing that I don't know how we would measure that, except for the teachers were super excited to have these books and use them all the time now and send them home. But I think there are things like that that happen on a daily basis that are really powerful to, to almost democratize some of our great practices or our needs. We take, Lisa and I take something we see in one school to another school all the time. I was over at Southeast and a second grade teacher, this is really simple. She kept her chair baskets under the chairs in a, in a different innovative way. So they weren't tripping people, what, you know. And I said, "Well, have you shared this with the other teachers? Because this is going to save time. This is going to be, kids are going to be able to do stuff, they're not going to have to transition as much. And we know that any transition we can alleviate means more learning for our kids, right? Means more, you know, engagement." And so we get to do that too, and that's like a, like an on-the-side kind of.
Well, I think.
But it's the innovation part. We find, we might find somebody's innovation and say, "Can we amplify you?"
As far as specific data, I completely understand that request. I think, we did talk a little bit about that, but for today, I think the tough part is, like, we have some of that data, but it's this specific teacher. Like, I might have taken engagement data. So I know, Steve, you mentioned engagement. Like, I'm measuring how many students were engaged during the lesson. We work on this technique that we're going to use. And then the next time I meet with them, I collect data on student engagement. And so you can see numerically, empirically, that increase. So maybe that can be our goal for next time the group presents to you, is to show you some of those pieces. It is going to be like, okay, this is one teacher and us finding a way to to keep, to maintain that teacher's privacy. But, you know, maybe we can show you just a couple of different snippets and examples of some of that specific individual data that we've gathered.
Well, I mean, and contextually, going back to your, your pie analogy, I mean, the budget is, is what the budget is. And I would love to give, I think, I speak for everybody when we say this, this program sounds great. And it makes perfect sense to me because if your teachers have a direct impact on your students and you can help the teachers be 100% of whatever their potential is, I mean, that's, that's good in any business to to help your employees reach their, their full potential. So that's what we want for everybody. But we have, outside of, you know, classroom teachers, we have a finite number of heads, you know, that the budget and, and tax revenue can support. And so if we wanted to put a person in every building, is that a better use of those funds than a MAP interventionist or a reading interventionist or a, you know, pick whatever that.
Or extra teachers.
Right. Or, or, or reducing classroom size so the teachers.
Exactly what I was getting to. We have to have some kind of justification or evidence that this program is working.
And while I agree with you, it'd be great to just say, "Well, show me a measurement that X, you know, this, this performance improved by 8% for your program and theirs was 4%, so this is the program we want to go with." I don't think we're going to get that because it's going to be a combination of objective and subjective data. I mean, there's going to be something you're just going to give back that teachers just feel better because this program's there. They feel happier and more successful and fulfilled in their, in their jobs.
And you're retaining more teachers because they feel, to your point, you're retaining and attracting more teachers because they feel supported in their work and the culture improves, right?
But I think as, as we've talked about goals, the thing we've kept coming back to is we've started all these initiatives, the interventionists, the instructional coaching, but how do we show which, which of those programs is most effective? And what's the correct balance between, you know, resources there? And maybe you'll tell me, and I, I think the program is early, so maybe you don't have a feel for that. I don't, I don't know who to talk to here. You know, is this something where it's, it's a major program push for five, 10 years and then all the employees that we have have reached their potential? Now we only have to kind of deal with the new, you know, hires that, that have those deficiencies because we've addressed everyone else's needs, so then we can scale down to what's right for just that, you know, whatever that turnover is? Or is this a program that really, there's going to be so much change in, in instruction and everything else that we're going to need that full capacity for the foreseeable future? You know, interventionists, I kind of understand, you know, that you've got new kindergartners every year, so there's always going to be somebody with a problem or a deficiency that's going to need that extra help. But when your faculty is a little bit more static, is there a point where you've addressed all those needs and now that program can, can scale back and those resources can be reallocated? So those are the things I would encourage you to think about, you know, as we move, as we go forward over the next few years is what, what does this eventually look like? How do we know we're meeting the needs and how are we showing or measuring our effectiveness such that we can say? Because every one of those groups would come to us and say, "We need more, more of us."
Right.
And how do we, how do we know who to say yes and no to?
Well, and I think, just a caution or whatever, I mean, and like I said, it will be up, this is just my thoughts on this, would be that it's really important that you have a plan first and then expand. Because if you have the people and then you create the plan, then you will kind of run into that. So I would, just in my own opinion, I would highly recommend, to your point, that you have a very clearly articulated plan of what your goals are, how it's going to, how you're going to measure it, how you're going to know it's effective before you start hiring the people to fill it, so that you know what their jobs, their roles, the goals are when you put them in it. So we were very intentional when we started the coaching role, that we, that we had a very clear idea of kind of what we wanted them to do and how we wanted them to grow. If you're going to add anything, even the coaches, as much as I would love to say add 16 of them next year, I would caution you not to do that until you have a really clear idea of what it was going to look like, right? What your anticipated outcome was, how are you going to know? And who does it take and how many? Do you want to go content area specialist? Do you want to go instructional? I mean, there are pros and cons to all of those things. And so while I say, "Yes, I would love to see the program grow," I, I agree with you about all of the things that you're saying is I think you need to. is I think you need to have a clear idea of what it is you want it to look like and to know that you have to, you have to know what your, what your target is, right? And how you can measure it. So.
Well, that's what we're, that's what we're asking for help with.
Right, exactly.
Exactly. I mean, exactly what we're asking for help with. Going forward, our personnel dollars are very tight. We're very strapped. We're going to have trouble over the next several years making sure that we have enough money to pay for the personnel that we need. And so it's, it's going to get closer and closer and tighter and tighter about decisions about what programs might have to be cut or not cut. And so we're trying to, we're trying to figure out some kind of informational basis that will allow us to understand, you know, from a, from an articulable standpoint, what each program offers so that, you know, if we're called on going forward to make those reductions, that we're, we're prepared to do that. And that's exactly what you're saying.
Yes.
You know, it, it's good to have a plan and it's good to have a plan in place. But with education, what we tend to do is put a plan in place and never take it away. And I think, I think some, one of the things that we have to look at as a district is to start pruning the dead wood. And that's one of the things that came out of a workshop that we recently had with administration and the board was pruning dead wood. And so we, we need to know, really in a very intimate way, what the benefits, what the costs and the benefits are, because that's what we're down to now.
And what's going, what's going.
And so we have to know that.
And you have to know of the money you're spending, which dollar is getting closest to the kids? That's what I do with my budget. I look at my budget.
And that's what we're trying to do here. That's what we're asking you to help us with.
I, I agree 100%. I support that 100%. And I think the really great opportunity that we have right now is that as you're starting that work with the goal setting, when we had IAS become help us with the goal setting. When you have those really clearly articulated goals, so like the learning and teaching goals I have, I, I know what I'm trying to measure and I can tell if we hit the target or if we didn't on different things. When we have some more of those larger, broader goals at the district level that are more measurable, then you start to see where these things, where, where the live wood and the dead wood, I guess, in your context is, right? Because here are the very, very clearly articulated goals that we have as a district, right? And this is how we're going to meet it. And you're going to be, you're going to be required to measure it. Did you hit the goal? I mean, we're going to have dashboards, they're going to measure that goal. And that's going to help not only with instructional coaching, but all of the things that you're going to be trying to put into place to support each of those goals. So I think this is a, a great opportunity, right at this particular moment in time, to have this conversation in conjunction with the conversation that you're having with the, you know, the broader district goals, right? And we have all these really great, really great things going on, but if they're not attached, not to the strategic plan, which I, I, is great, I agree, but if they're not attached to a very specific measurable goal, they're just kind of spinning out there on their own. And there's no umbrella for them to hang under, right? So the goals are the umbrella for them to hang under. And if you've got all these things that are floating out in space, you don't know. You don't know which is the live wood.
I totally agree with all this.
And so what I'm telling you is the exciting part is that you've begun that work that will support not only instructional coaching, but all the different initiatives and the things that you're doing to innovate and provide a solid education for our kids. So whatever, I, you know, we, I will be happy to leave with my, whatever data I have. And obviously the coaches have all sorts of data to pull together, specifically in the coaching model. And I think it'll be really, really powerful to do that in the context of which strategic goal for the district is it falling under when you're talking about that goal? And you're talking about the actions underneath those goals? That's a really great time for them to be able to report back on how they're contributing to that piece of whatever goal it is that they kind of fall under.
It's like a call to action. Let me see, you ready?
I have no doubt in my mind. I mean, I, I, I mean, I am telling you 100%. I have, I have never been, and I don't do this very often, I have never been more certain about, about the, the impactfulness of something long-term as I am about coaching and supporting adults. And I, I think that, to your point, that we will never outgrow it because as soon as anybody thinks that they're done learning, they need to go. Because as human beings, we're never done. We never can, we're not omniscient. We can never be all knowing there's always something we can do better. And I would love to say that education was going to slow down enough that, that would even be an option. But we can continue to hone our practice and we can continue to get better, you know, move from that whole good to great paradigm. So I know it's late, so I'm, I don't want to keep you.
Oh, we're just getting started.
I was going to say, maybe for next time, I would be curious. We've talked about kind of content specialist versus grade level or, or building level specialist. And I don't need an answer tonight, but I would be curious maybe down the road to understand what, if there's overlap there with what PLCs are trying to accomplish? Because those are more, right? Those, my understanding at the board level is that those are more, you know, grade level or, or content level teams that should be sharing best practices and improvements and things like that. So I'd be curious how that differs or overlaps with what instructional coaching.
Yeah, we meet with them frequently. Like we go, we are invited into their meetings for really content specific and curricular kinds of questions. And so that they are a big part of our, of our work. And the team leads reach out to us frequently with, with questions or work that they want to accomplish with their teams. So, so there's a, it's a pretty kind of interrelated part.
Yeah, and Phoebe and Beth have done a lot of work with PLCs and their coaching role. So it is 100% under the PLC umbrella. And just very convenient to 1:00 because, you know, I could, you're talking all night about it because I love this stuff, so you know that about me? So maybe you'll miss that about me, maybe you won't miss that about me. I don't know. But yeah, I, yeah, so it does, yes. So that would be a good thing for the coaches to bring, to kind of put on your, and maybe to share, like the alignment piece, again, all of these big ones. We don't have all these random, these seemingly random programs out there. When you see them connected, when you see where they all fit, when you see how they contribute to the larger success for kids, it makes it easier to see their impact.
I just have one more request. I don't have this presentation on my board docs. Somebody put it up there so I could go to Lisa's link. Like tomorrow or whatever.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make sure to get that tomorrow.
That'd be great.
You could just listen to our voices and our little videos all day.
Check it out. It's not so great.
You know what? That was like, and that's interesting. We have, I'm really famous at Northwell.
You're a celebrity.
Like I, with first graders, I am a celebrity because they, I made a, I did a whole unit for them that wasn't supplied by our curriculum materials. And they chose to use parts of it again. So it's me like talking to the kids. And so I walked into the cafeteria recently and all these first graders were like pointing at me and waving and going, I like reading, I like reading. This was all about reading, it was so funny. So you're just going to really love it, both of our voices just roving on.
I can't wait. I cannot wait. And then I just wanted to say congratulations to you, Phoebe. I'm so glad you've shared, decided to share your talents with the district.
Thank you. Thank you for proving.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's been a fabulous 10 years. I appreciate all that you've done.
Is this your last meeting?
It is my last meeting, yes.
Well, thank you for your service to the district as well.
Oh, thank you.
We appreciate it. And best of luck in your new, your new.
Thank you.
Endeavor.
You sure you don't want to come in June?
And what?
You sure you don't want to come back in June?
I will actually be in Big Sur, California.
Why would you want to go there?
I can't imagine why, I want to be in Perth on top of the Pacific Ocean. I have no idea.
If Mr. Keiker was here, he'd convince you otherwise. You've got to stay in the state.
He is persuasive, yes.
I think growing up in California, I think they are good competition for Illinois to be near that bottom of that financial landscape. Probably number two if Illinois is number one.
Okay, well, we'll move on then. Open discussion and future agenda items. Any future agenda items or?
No, I'd just say I was, I was reminded by our guest from the other evening about the board considering a resolution or whatever we called it about supporting, I guess, the implementation of a stoplight and a non-financial obligation to support the, yeah. The idea of that, something that we're still considering is that it be a future agenda discussion.
Yeah, I, I actually talked to the mayor about that.
I knew you were going to do that.
And he, he said that it's, it's weird because the city has the subdivisions, but Plank Road is actually a state road.
State road, yeah.
So it's a, it's controlled by the county. So, so we have all these entities to try to, that we'd have to bring together. And they, he still indicates that there's something in the works to, you know, to get that pushed through. And I told him that we would, as a board, it seemed that we were willing to support any initiative along those lines. So I'm hoping that we can combine, maybe even get the Park District involved too, and all, all of the public bodies in alignment, you know, petition IDOT so that we would present a united front rather than, you know, piecemeal. So I'll, I'll continue to talk to him about that and, you know, hopefully we can get something put together soon. Because no one disagrees that there should be, except for IDOT, you know, that there should be a stop, a stoplight.
Unequally, it's concerned, it's Eric, it's just, I know, you know, preaching to the choir, but if there's something we can do.
Yeah, no.
Thank you for following up, the mayor.
Yeah. Other issues or observations or questions? Okay, well, if there are none, I need a motion to go into executive session for the consideration of matters related to the appointment, employment, discipline or dismissal of personnel, matters related to individual students' purchase or lease of real property for the use of the district, negotiations and imminent litigation.
So move. Second.
Moving second, roll call.
Davy, this, DeVito?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yep.
Ren?
Yeah.
Chyla?
Yes.
Dombek?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, we'll adjourn for executive session and then we'll return for our final votes. We're back in exec, from executive session, back in open session. Is there a motion to approve the personnel report as presented?
Second.
Roll call.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Ren?
Yes.